All right, we're good to go. We're a couple of minutes late, sorry. All right, if we could call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America.
There we go. Roll call.
Senator.
Here. Here.
Senator.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're, we're our audience of citizens. So I would ask if we could, the crowd's not, you know, too bad tonight, but I'm gonna give everybody their, their shot and if you could keep it to about two minutes, that'd be great. So we get through everybody. We do have a lot of stuff on our agenda, some discussion items and I would like to get through them, but we'll go ahead and start and what is that? Kate, what's the first name? Bodria? Bodria? Sorry, I didn't get you. What's your, okay. Yeah, there we go. I thought that, but I wasn't sure. Welcome.
Hey, everybody. I'm here today to speak against revisions to Board of Education.
Can you give your name and address?
Oh. 115 Skinner Road. I said I'm here against revisions to Board of Education. The partisan Board of Education. And I, yep. And I think councilors should vote no. I think the public at large.
How about now? Better?
Think the public at large should vote no on the question as well. As a parent of two children in the Berlin school system, a household has invested interest in a high-quality education. Partisan Board bring political agendas to the classroom. At a time when everything is highly politicized and polarized, last thing that we should do is bring political calculus into curriculums. The town of Berlin voted down this very revision six years ago. Introducing the same revision again is a sign of overreach. Represents a solution in search of a problem, not the other way around. Councilor should reject this revision. Berlin voters will remember in November who voted for this provision. They go to the polls. I know I will.
Hello, Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Kathy LaPalo from Six Kramer Drive. She was unable to make it, sent an email today, would like her thoughts in the record. This is feedback on the grant we're going for. She writes, I propose a large school be renovated to establish a fine arts and decorative arts gallery that will provide artists and artisans with a central location to produce and sell their art and handicrafts. Anything Garden Club is currently using this building to produce decorative floral creations. Organizing artists and artisans throughout the creation of an art league benefits them, the town, its residents and businesses. Perhaps the town support of the league will entice former members to return. The formation of a league created a working partnership among artists and artisans and other organizations. The building would serve members of more than just space. It would offer them an outlet to sell their products, provide instruction, art shows and more. Members could offer adult and children construction, particularly during the summer months, including fine art, painting, sculpture, photography, drawing, and decorative arts, ceramics, basketry, jewelry, metalworks, textiles, and together create an available list of resources. Further promote the concept, I would suggest involvement with the Adult Education Department. Currently, there are not many art classes available. Adult education will be able to avail themselves of league members and members could earn extra income, a win-win situation. Rather than offer art classes to high school, which provided challenges to those with mobility issues, they could be conducted at large school. Additional parking necessary for a functional gallery could be located on the south side of the building. The second topic for comment is a proposed community park along Steel Boulevard. Although the drawings provided are only conceptual, and the practice is in the formative stages, I would like to suggest boldly geometric pattern for the pavers does not further the village concept being developed. It is much too contemporary and the geometric patterning detracts from any brickwork design. Berlin at one time was known as the cap, the capital of the Northeast. While the product I'm sure will conform with ADA requirements, there are features which can further assist disabled geometric pattern of papers may create difficulties for visually impaired individuals. Their depth perception may be affected as well as their sense of surroundings. There are other design elements that would be better suited. Also, though I could be wrong to the scale of the drawing, there appear to be no railings for the stairs leading to the gazebo. Handicap parking may comply with connect requirements in that it is closest to a walkway or entrance, but all efforts to be made to provide the easy accessible route for those individuals with mobility issues. Consideration should be given to the fact that not every individual with a mobility challenge uses a wheelchair. Therefore, distance is important. Selection of papers would provide a surface that assists disabled individuals and such a grade to minimize the vibrations of a wheelchair, whether motorized or pushed. Lastly, as the music shall, I do not know if it is possible to construct in a manner to enclose a mobile stage such as that is owned by Weatherfield. The future would allow the stage to be available throughout town, providing entertainment at multiple parks, schools or town grounds. I think this opportunity to voice my questions, suggestions and concerns respectfully, Catherine LaPalo, Six Kramer Drive, Berlin.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, that's the, the last name on the list. Catherine?
I'm sorry, I, I think I got to the meeting late. Is there any chance I could get a moment to speak?
Sure, yeah, hey, hang on a minute. We'll, we'll go to our Zoom folks shortly.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, no, you're fine. You're not late at all. Perfect timing.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mary Catherine LaRose, 26 Woodruff Lane, Kensington, Connecticut. I was a little bit late, so I didn't get to sign up. So I wanted to speak first about the Pistol Creek off-leash area that's being proposed. I went there today and I guess I thought we sort of were already doing it, but obviously nothing's been done yet because maybe of tonight, whatever's happening tonight at this meeting. So, but I did get to walk it again and see where the white lines are because I'm a very visual person. I had to see it. I wish it was a little bit bigger, but that's okay. However, since it hasn't moved forward yet, the people who walk their dogs off-leash are now in a quandary because July 31st is Sunday. And so I would be asking that the extension, that an extension be allowed to continue to use Bicentennial Park until Pistol Creek is complete, completed. So that's what I'm asking on that issue. And on the Board of Education issue, six years ago, I think that the tide was turning in terms of politis, politicization of everything, but it certainly has hit ahead now, six years later, and I, I just think it's, it's foolish to say that the Board of Education is nonpartisan now just because they say they are. I do believe that the majority of the state is in the, in the right place with having partisan boards of education. I think it would be beneficial for an, a potential applicant to have the backing of either party or any party to go to for support, for advice, for money. So I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think it's done everywhere else, obviously, except for, I think, three towns. So I think it's time we got on board. And, and I do believe six years ago, if I remember what Paul Argosy said, there were a lot of little minutia on there and it sort of got lost. And if we can clean it up this time and stick to really important items for the charter revision, I do think that the voters in Berlin are ready to make that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Donna Bovee, 85 Steepleview Drive, Berlin. Also speaking on two things. I joined manager, the mayor, Mary Rose and Steve Wood, probably about a month ago, along with Paul Briswold from the schools, and we walked the Pistol Creek area. And I just want to say that after all of us caucused within the Pistol Creek area, this seems to be the best location. And the size is limited due to the use by the schools for the cross-country teams. We wanted to make sure that those would be protected. And as we discussed, it would be fenced in. I know there's maybe still an open question whether or not it should be three-sided fenced in so that the wetlands is the actual buffer. I suggest it should be four sides just to make sure dogs don't go through the wetlands and cross into other areas where the walkers are and others. On the Board of Ed partisan, my children are grown. I had the benefit of a nonpartisan Board of Education. And everybody can say it's partisan and all that crap. Fact is that if it becomes partisan, you do bring politics to every Board of Ed meeting. That's what you're going to be discussing. You're not going to be discussing the education of the children or the betterment of our community with a better educational system. Board of Ed, even if they're nonpartisan, they, they obviously have worked well this town council with the Board of Finance through the superintendent's office. I've attended some of those meetings. So it works. Put politics in there just means you have a majority and you have minority and the kids lose. I do not want this thing to go through. I'm not even sure why it's been brought up again six years later. I suggest we move on and keep it nonpartisan. Thank you.
Yeah, Maria. Go on this side, I'll go on that side, then we'll go to Zoom. So, yeah, come on, come on up.
My name is Marie Muselli, 269 Circlewood Drive, Berlin. I'm here to speak about the I'll start by stating again about my disappointment and concern that the Berlin citizen did not report on this contentious issue. I'm wondering why. There'd be a reason the audience isn't aware of. Oh, no. Conservation Committee, commit, excuse me, the Conservation Commission, made up of seven residents, yields way too much power and control over every piece of open space that could not have been purchased without tax dollars paid before by the resident. They're not listening to the majority of the residents and the reasons for not wanting a dog park at this location. The majority isn't against a dog park, but it's not in favor of the location. I know for certain the majority doesn't approve of the location. I've stopped and talked with many people on the trail over the past few weeks, and I haven't found one person that favored that location as well as following comments on both of the town's Facebook pages. The mayor has the right to listen to the residents and override this decision by forcing the commission to allocate a secluded alternate space for the cost of an unsightly chain link fence not even be necessary. While I understand that these commissions are in place for a reason, so is the avenue for the mayor to override their one-sided thinking of a few people, of a few controlling the majority. Some animals that would inevitably walk through the open end of a chain link fence, they get stuck inside the unleashed dog park or even within the fence itself. What I mean by that is coming in through the shrubbery. I just saw this actually a couple of days ago when I was walking on Sunday. I witnessed this earlier this week while walking. Adele and her two little ones were walking right through the painted area where the outline is. I think it would have been created, excuse me, I think it would have created stress for them to figure out how to get out if they were inside of a chain link fence. They walked across the path to the adjacent area. What will prevent dog trainers from using this space for dog training? Again, who will maintain this area in a secluded open space? This wouldn't even be a concern. You wouldn't even need a chain link fence for that. I believe that the people that use Bicentennial Park, which is apparently a very tight-knit group, will not be traveling to Pistol Creek, but will continue to use Bicentennial Park with their pets. I have this information from a very good, a very good source. The council is opening up Pistol Creek, which is not all that large of an area. Out of town people that will frequent it, because it's right off the Berlin Turnpike. My guess is that there will be more non-residents using the dog park than residents. What a great way to use the taxpayer money to satisfy the few people on the Conservation Committee. While the proposed dog park will be on the second trail away from Savage Hill Road, I don't see anything that will prevent dog owners from having their dogs off-leash starting at the parking lot. This can create a huge issue with people and families walking the trail with or without their own dogs on leash. There's also a possibility that an unleashed dog can exit the unfenced area and have the ability to get to the neighbor's property. That's certainly looking for a big lawsuit. Has the cost of insurance, materials, maintenance and cost of a lawsuit even been considered? Even though there's an August 1st deadline to reach an agreement, I urge that deadline be extended so the council can review any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I don't know. I have copies of this. Should I leave them?
You want to, sure, sure. Yeah, of course. Yeah.
All right. This is a little unusual. I have some information from, and I don't need to read it right this minute, from two other residents that I personally do not know. They reached out to me and their topic is a little bit different from mine. It's still about dog park and bicentennial. So I'm not, one of the people actually is present, but she said that she not like doing public speaking and the other person is not present because he's working. So I'm not sure. I'm kind of in a, I'm not sure how you want me to handle that. I think it's important for their voices to be heard.
Can you briefly get through them as brief as possible? Are we talking pages and pages?
Not pages and pages, a little bit long. Like a couple of minutes. I'm gonna read as quick as I can. I literally just got this. Walked out the door.
Okay. Summarize the
No, because this is not my forte of what they're talking about on either one of them.
Okay.
Well, if you want somebody else
That's fine. No, no, no.
Back.
No, 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 that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay.
You got the documents? Go ahead. Go for it.
All right. All right. So, what though? I don't have, I asked this guy for his address. I think it's on Savage Hill Road. I don't have it.
Okay.
And I don't know if he replied. I didn't, should I check?
They're both, they both live in town, right?
Yes. People might know them. I don't know them personally.
All right.
Okay, so this one is from Tyler Day. Not sure if it's, uh, he lives on Savage Hill or his family lives on right, but he is, lives in town. That's long, so let me just get my marker here to keep my place. All right. Searching Berlin off-leash dog park on Google brought up something a bit disturbing, not as a resident dog owner, but as a resident Berlin. Whatever you view on the proposed off-leash is whatever your view is on the proposed off-leash, is it in Pistol Creek, it should worry you that the search of Berlin, Connecticut off-leash dog park gives you three highlighted top results. Bicentennial Park with two reviews, Meriden Dog Park with 149 reviews and Pistol Creek, 136 reviews. What's the point of this meeting? Because it seems to me that it's already decided to go through with it, being advertised as such to the entire public, not just that doesn't seem like a big deal. It should be noted that the next park on the list of off-leash dog parks in Berlin, Connecticut is Sage Park. So if it's not a big deal, it's not a big deal then to go walk your dog at Sage Park less than a mile away. The site Bring Fido lists 19 off-leash dog parks within 20 miles of Berlin. So why does a town with two listed off-leash parks, one less than a mile away, need a third? This area, you're so hell-bent on letting dogs have free rein over, is smack dab in the middle of protected wetland. Per the Inland Wetlands Commission, excuse me, per the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Act, this law provides an orderly regulatory process that balances the need for economic growth with the need to protect our environment. This park isn't just helpful, it's essential. It's necessary for many wetland and endangered species like eastern painted turtles and threatened waterfowl species like egress or even plants like American reeds to survive. As much as I love dogs, they don't have the best track record with harassing and killing slow-moving animals and reptiles, chasing birds around and would be trampling plants in the habitats these animals live in and nesting. While photo and video evidence may be scarce to show you, these endangered animals really are prolific in this area. I urge anyone concerned by this proposition to now take as many as you can because of the rest of, because if the rest of you really do decide to put this dog park will never see any, that delicate wildlife in this park ever again. They could buy to those marshlands being used for anything more than to be trampled into a mud-rutted tennis ball. For those that couldn't care less about any of that, who are really, are you really trying to cut even more money out of the budget in this economy for something this town already has? How on earth can you justify paying for the installation, maintenance and cleanup costs at a time like this? Are you just going to let the garbage cans overflow with dog defecation or pick up the piles of dog defecation? Or the, or the bags full of it and the rest of the garbage they leave dotting the trail edges from the lazy owners? You mean to tell me you're taking a dog park with such a rare element as fully paved walking trails? Specifically by many older residents who do that fully paved, stable nature and let, let loose a bunch of unleashed dogs onto onto it to defecate and, and jump all over everybody. Am I the only person who thinks this isn't just a bad idea? It's downright stupid. How long before someone like that gets knocked over and it's knocked over and broken and the town gets sued? It takes only one. And if you try to use the excuse that something like this would be rare, that implies your belief of the instances of animal-to-human contact to be low. And if the instance of contact is so low, you're willing, you're willing to feel safe from lawsuits. That means you believe relatively few will use it, which begs the question of why you think it's so necessary to begin with. Last time I checked, the other off-leash dog parks aren't overflowing. This is nothing more than a conveyance. I think you meant convenience. It sure isn't a necessity and it sure as hell isn't something that aligns with the IWWA principle to balance the need for economic growth and the need to protect our environment. This proposed off-leash park neither promotes economic growth or environmental protection. It would in fact be just the opposite. Requiring consistent maintenance fee at the expense of taxpayers while having no plan for financial recoup, while simultaneously allowing protected wetland to be trampled and its wildlife to be killed and scared away for good. Any person agreeable to an off-leash park because of their compassion for pet animals should understand and have the same respect and compassion for these endangered wild animals. If that weren't enough, it's already home to a wild dog population, coyote dens lying this land. I actually can attest to that because I have one literally in the corner of my backyard on, on the open space. That was from me. This is an animal commonly known for eating domesticated pets. While they mostly hunt in the morning and late afternoon hours, they are known to hunt all day during spring and early summer. Do you really want to let your dogs loose in a muddy marsh area populated by coyotes? And that's the end of is. And again, not my personal research.
Okay.
I felt it was, uh, I was compelled to share their or come back.
No.
Else talk.
Just go ahead, yeah. Because you can, I appreciate it. Yeah. That's all right.
All right. This is two pages. One double sided. As of today, this was written, I guess, on July 22nd. And again, I have no personal connection to either of these people. I want to make that very clear. As of today, July 22nd, my petition to keep Bicentennial
Who's, who's the author?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gotta say your name. I can't, I can't say it. Oh, oh, Susan Kwaznisky. 1111 Kensington Road. And my petition to create a parking area at Winesap Road is up to 617. Of course, over these last two years, I really needed a better understanding of this situation, so I started doing research. So far, my research indicates there's no protected aquifer inside of Bicentennial Park, but there is a well that only requires 250 feet of protection that is nowhere near the Meadow or Winesap, near the Meadow or Winesap Road. I also found that while there is an easement on the land, that since the town is the grantor and the grantee, the easement can be lifted or modified. I learned that the grant money obtained was intended for the creation of a park, recreational use with no limitations on type of recre, on type of recreation. It was not a grant for the purchase of open spaceland for well protection. And then a compromise had to be made by the town to accept the bicentennial would have to be a park first, to accept that, excuse me, to accept that bicentennial would have to be a park first, second to an open space well protection, so as not to lose the grant money. Following the condemnation of the land chosen in a court battle with some of its owners, finds that Bicentennial Park was born. This park for recreational purposes was originally placed under the authority of the Parks and Recreation Committee, which makes sense because it's a park, but certainly could have also been covered by the Conservation Commission with the town settling any disputes over land use in accordance with the town's charter. Ironically, when Parks and Rec expressed support for a dog park in the parking lot at Bicentennial, their authority was taken away and given to the Conservation Commission, which I do not understand. And while conservation does support the parking lot, they do not support the dog park. With regards to the easement, it really seems to me that it goes against the express purpose of the grant money that allowed the town to acquire this land. The alternate scenario to this area, had the grant money been lost, that most likely there would have been no park and Winesap Road would have continued with all the additional homes being built to complete that subdivision project. With access, with access opened by this construction, the adjoining properties could have been developed also. Possibility of how that area could have turned out are many. I also learned that a 50-foot strip of land was offered at the Cross Creek subdivision to create another entrance to Bicentennial, but it was never utilized. Ultimately, the town did not get the grant money to create this park for recreational use and it has become a very popular, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Ultimately, the town did get the grant money to create the park for recreational use and it has become a very popular park with the community. We very much enjoy it and want more use of and access to it. It is also the only access point in the bicentennial complex that allows for a moderate walking experience, making it popular with a wider range of people. I learned that there are three families who predate the park. All the others purchased homes on the access road to pre, to a pre-existing park. I understand why the neighbors don't want the community, don't want what the community wants. I understand those who want to turn back time to when this location was their private playground, but it's been 47 years already. Isn't, isn't it time to move past this? They really expect that the community would not want to use this public park? Do they really not understand that living on the access road to the park and living near a park or literally at the entrance to a park and its parking area comes with having traffic and people who want to go and enjoy the park? And I'm going to stop here for one second because I want, again, I want to clarify that this is not my opinion. I don't agree with the opinion of, I don't know the history behind bicentennial and I don't agree with having access in the cul-de-sac. That's my opinion. But like I said, I think it's fair to share other people's thoughts. If you build it, they will come. Isn't that the point of having a park for people to come out and use it? I am aware of a similar parking situation at Ragged Mountain that is soon to be remedied by the creation of a 47-space parking lot graciously offered by Shuttle Meadow. How amazing is that? Let's keep this forward-thinking going at Winesap Road. Please help me understand why a structured parking area away, emphasized away, from the houses is less desirable than the congestion and activity that currently occurs in front of the Emphasized away from the houses is less desirable than the congestion and activity that currently occurs in front of the two homes where the parking already exists now. Naturally, those homeowners don't like this activity next to their homes. But the solution isn't easy. Put into the park in a way. But the parking area inside of the park where they don't have to deal with it. I'm sorry, put the parking area inside of the park where they don't have to deal with it and can't see it. It seems so simple to so many and it might even make things better, given the current situation there. The park is forever and so are, is the community, so are the communities that desire to use it. Well, will not be affected by this parking area. The easement can be lifted to accommodate it. A version of this parking lot has already been approved by planning and zoning and D E E P. The Conservation Commission supports the parking and the community wants both. Wants both there. So why won't you allow this when we know it's possible and it's in the best interest of the town? Please help me understand why there is such a stranglehold. On the use of bicentennial park. And what will it take for us to fix this? The community is counting on you to create a solution. That's it.
Okay.
We used, and the three different opinions.
Thank you.
If I could have any of the letters, at least.
Yes. Can I have extras? Yeah, we got a set over there. Thank you. Thank you guys. Yeah, so I, are we, we're done with this side? I'm just trying to go, yes. Uh, oh, well, we'll, we'll, we'll take. Young lady and then we can go back.
Betsy Fiskorsky, two four nine, Sap Road, right next to the bicentennial park. Which has devolved into a dog park. That were meant to be a dog park. Ninety five percent of the people who go there are dog owners, alright? This morning, I looked out at five thirty, there was the car there. Um, at seven, no, we're five cars there. It is constant. It is people with their dogs off leash. Susan, I have all the documentation. There is an underground op for. The reason the easement was put on was because periodically the town would look for baseball fields. Miniature football fields. And they'd look at the bicentennial park. That's why there is an easement on that property, which should not be lifted. The town is offering an alternative in Pistol Creek. You're lucky the town is offering you an alternative. Other towns have tried to put dog parks in. The people had to raise the money themselves. In order to get a dog park. This is not a park for everyone. This is a park that is utilized ninety five percent by people with their dogs. They walk into the park, some leashed, some not leashed, and their dogs go wild. I can't walk in there. There are dog fights. Can hear them from where I live. The parking lot is not going to solve the solution. It'll just bring more dog park people. And the thing that Marie said about strangers. We had people coming from Handon, the last, one of the last meetings they, they came up from Handon with their Vish, Vishlows. A whole group of them would meet there on Sunday. Please. This is sixteen years in the making, trying to get the dogs leashed in the dog park. Please stop fighting it. Let us have our, our neighborhood back. I love it when I see people walking down there with their children, no dogs. I saw two people going in there tonight, hikers, no dogs. Animals, you talk about animals, there are bears, there are coyotes. I've seen them in the spring. There are all kinds of, of animals running loose. Please, this has taken so long for our neighborhood to have this go through. Please just go through with it. Thank you.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Pierre.
Peter Zerboza, one five eight, Elwood Road. I support a nonpartisan Board of Education and I won't go into the details why, because I've said it at numerous public hearings. Uh, the, uh, just a couple of points though, um, the Board of Ed consists of four registered Democrats, three registered Republicans and two independents. So there currently isn't a majority of either party on the board. And that's actually an excellent way to keep it. The only thing that would make it better is if it was three, three, three. Um, furthermore, although Connecticut has. Uh, we are one of the few towns in Connecticut that is nonpartisan. The trend of being partisan is, is, uh, it's not a trend, it's an anomaly because. Uh, over two thirds of US states, um, all have local, uh, nonpartisan OEs. Um, so at the conclusion of the public hearing on, uh, July twelfth, uh, Mayor Mark, you stated that the goal is not to eliminate the, uh, V N A or Visiting Nurse Association. He then went on to say again that the goal is not to remove the V N A from the charter or eliminate it. However, when I look at the revised charter and proposals, I see that every single mention of the V N A is removed from the charter.
No, that, yeah, so that's, that's not correct what you quoted me on. What the, 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 the reason for it is to remove it from the charter and make an ordinance.
Uh, right, but.
That governs the V N A. That, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
So why in the, why have you removed all? Visiting Nurse Association verbiage and now it's a public nursing service?
From the charter, I, I don't, I didn't see that language. That's what the Charter Revision Committee did. That's what we're going to discuss tonight.
Okay, so you're going to vote on something you didn't read. Okay.
No, we didn't, but we're not, wait, 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 wait.
Right, no.
Before we, no, no, no.
No, no, no.
Sir, no, 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 Peter, please stop. Okay, so it's great, I'm letting everybody speak, but when. Someone's far off the track of what was said and wasn't said, and you're just going to take this argument down the road further. That's not correct. We're not voting on anything tonight. We can't change the charter. Okay, we are. Just finish. So we're sending recommendations. To the Charter Revision Commission. They will make the final determination. Whatever they decide will be made into questions. That will go to the voters. We're not voting to change anything. We don't have that authority to do that. We have recommended to them certain things already. And we can make further recommendations tonight.
Right, so you can make recommendations and that's kind of.
Which they do not have to act on.
Okay, I understand that, so.
Apparently not.
Speaking.
That's okay.
If you'll let me finish speaking.
Sure.
Thank you. Furthermore, the revised charter only states, quote, "It is the intent of this charter that public nursing service shall be provided by the town of Berlin as shall be set forth in the Code of Ordinances." I'd also like to point out that the title of this section has also been changed from Berlin V N A to Provision of Public Nursing Service. Public nursing service is not synonymous with a visiting nurse association. It is a vague and broad term that encompasses a litany of nursing services such as a school nurse. Or immunization clinic, et cetera. Thus, I'm, I am perplexed as to how. Goal is to not eliminate the V N A. But the current charter proposal eliminates all mention of it and eliminates any protection it has from being eliminated, which is why it was in the charter to begin with. With that said, Mayor Mark. Will you recommend an amendment to the verbiage of that section to specify that public nursing service is a visiting nurse association? If not, will you stand by the stated goals and not vote to eliminate the V N A during your tenures mayor, should it come to a vote? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Sam La Magno, seventy eight, Hickory Hill Road. A quick question. When the. The charter call, like when the charter revision. Is finally voted by the commission. That is. Then it goes to the council. Can you guys, and I don't know what the rules are, so maybe you can enlighten me. Do you guys like, can you like strip certain things out or you have to vote on what the charter commission gives you?
You should know that you were in the Charter Review Commission last.
I was under the assumption that the council had the final say. I could be, I mean, I can't remember back six years.
Send it to referendum.
You just send it in my, because I remember.
I don't think we changed anything.
No, I don't mean not change it. I mean, except that like, when we did it on Charter Revision Committee, we broke it apart, like. You had it in parts. Part one was the Board of Education. And part two was the charter itself and part three was a question. I was in the assumption you could, the council couldn't say, well, we, we don't accept part one. We deny part one. And we'll accept part two and part three. Am I correct, Mr. Corporation Council? Am I wrong? I, I mean, I, I can't remember what was, uh, what was.
The council can send its recommendations to the Charter Revision Commission. The Charter Revision Commission can accept or reject some or all of those recommendations. Ultimately, it's the questions that are. Determined by the Charter Revision Commission that go on the ballot.
Okay, but the council really can't accept their, like, what I'm saying with the final phase before it gets sent out to vote. They, they.
Doesn't come back to the council.
No, it doesn't. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Alright, so in reality, so you're going to have to like. Side, ultimately, it's, it's, it's the Charter Revision Commission. That's what I thought it was.
Ultimately, it's the voters.
Well, yeah, I mean, if it gets sent, ultimately, it is the voters.
Right.
So I guess coming here and, and, well, I'll express my opinion anyways. And I'll go to Charter Vision. I mean, we all know where I stand on it. But I'm, I, I decided to make a few phone calls. Call some towns because I have a lot of time on my hands. And, and I called some towns. And I talked to, um, Board of Ed, Board of Ed people. And they stated. That we're like the envy of everybody because the Board of Eds are getting very political right now. They're constantly bickering at their meetings. They can't seem to get their agendas together. And, and you have one side, the far left, far right, or whatever you want to call them, Democrats, Republicans, whatever. They're constantly bickering and they seem to forget about what they're there for. They're for the education of the students. And the main argument on one side is they feel that the parents don't have any rights whatsoever. And as a parent of a former stu-, of two former students. I tend to disagree with that because you have parent teacher conferences. If you don't like what parents are, what the teachers are saying, you go to a parent teacher conference. You could call the school, ask for a meeting. You could talk to superintendent, you could talk to the principal, and you could be there with setting the agenda. I'm a strong believer that parents should be involved in their kids' education. I'm a strong believer of that. But I so. Don't believe this myth that the Board of Education, a town of Berlin, are not listening to parents. And I so don't believe the myth. Of certain people in town that are saying that they're CRTs being taught in school. So I decided to call the superintendent too, and I said, our CRTs, and he's never lied to me. He said. CRTs are not being taught in the Berlin school. So then the last meeting I came, I think it was a couple of weeks ago with the mayor, with some lady came here and I don't know her name. Now her, the new thing is that they're not being taught. They're, they're like a secret. It's being taught through some, um, a new thing, the, um, social, what is the social injustice or whatever they call it now. That, that's where they're teaching CRTs. And I had to ask the superintendent again, I mean, is that true? And he said, absolutely not. They haven't even set up the social injustice. It was like a club or something back then. And parents are all upset and I'm not taking a position on it whatsoever because I don't know anything much about it. So I just want to make sure that people get the, the, the facts out there. It's the same thing, Mr. Mayor, and you'll probably laugh on it. If you saw it about the, the commu-, you know, people passing rumors around town about the, um. The, um, community center, senior center. Now, I, I personally feel it's very expensive and hopefully we can get it down and if not, maybe whatever. But some lady posted, well, how can we, we can't afford a community center senior, so they want five pools. They want a big banquet facilities and they want private chefs. I mean, these are the things that people are writing about. I mean, it's ridiculous, but that's what the rumor is about. And, and there's so many, and so many rumors about it. So I just want. If, you know, and we'll go talk in front of Charter Revision, but. I just want to make sure that everybody in this room knows. That CRTs are not being taught in Berlin schools. These are false claims and that parents have a right. To go express their, whatever they want their kids to do in education. The Board of Education, I've worked with them under the Board of Finance, they're fine people, they're dedicated people. And they will listen to you, but they're not going to be listening to people that are going to be hysterical and scream at them. And I think this argument started when the mask situation happened with the no mask, yes mask or whatever. And they seen people that want. A partisan Board of Education, didn't understand that the Board of Education, majority of them didn't even want a mask, didn't even want a mask. But they were forced under the executive powers of the governor. And if they violated those powers, the town would have been fined or the Board of Education would have been fined. And they can do, and these group of parents just didn't care and didn't understand the law. And I think this is where it all started. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I didn't, if I, yes.
Karen Padleiro, two two one, Stone Metal Lane. So. I have two things, actually three things to discuss, but I'll start with the dog issue. So perhaps the person who spoke for so long should have took a little bit of time to look at what the. Um, Conservation Commission is. It is not a board who tells the council what to do. It is an advisory board. We do not make decisions. We can advise, but we do not make decisions. The other thing that was brought up, that there's two members who have more power, which is complete and utter hogwash. We as a group have an equal vote. And we vote and then the majority rules. It is not two members who say you have to do this. And as a person, a citizen, not talking about me being a Conservation Commission member. I actually feel that dogs should be leashed. I don't care where they are, they should be on leash. And I know that we've had a couple, I'm not sure if it's one or two or more. Of instances where the town has had a suit brought against them because of dog bites. To me, that means for us to be safe and for us to do the safe thing. Dogs should be leashed. I don't care where they are, whether it's Pistol Creek or bicentennial, they need to be leashed. I've been a victim of dog bites, not once, but twice, and it's not fun at all. That's my thing on dog, uh, parks. Then I'll go to the Charter Revision Commission. So, um, I could understand the need to bring this forward. Yes, we need to remove the clause that says, because it is so outdated. That our town manager needs to live in town. Come on, it's ridiculous. Second of all, you have the V N A. And I could understand why you want to bring that forward. I get it. Having to spend out of taxpayers' dollars between five hundred thousand and one million dollars is wrong. Especially when V N As can bring in money and therefore help the town. So it's wrong that we are losing money year after year after year. I will tell you though. Changing to an ordinance, if you plan to keep the V N A, you still need to do everything that the V N A does. Because without it, you can be fined both on, by the state and by the federal government. Because you have regulations that you must follow. And if you don't, you could have fines up to a hundred thousand dollars. Do you really want to pay that on top of what you're losing? So you need to be careful. Last thing, of course, is the, um, by, uh, the partisan board. It's ridiculous. Our children matter more than politics. And to say we need that is total, total bull. What we need is for our children to grow in an environment where they can learn. Where they're welcomed regardless of what they consider as their gender. And to be able to know that that person may be one color and that person may be one color, but guess what? Under the skin, we're all the same. And so moving to a partisan board is just, just wrong. I have kids that went through Berlin schools and they're both successful young man. And guess what? He had a nonpartisan board. So why are you doing this again? You lost six years ago. Get over it. Finally. Finally, I find the whole thing from the very start of putting people onto this, um, Charter Revision Commission flawed. First, we have this person right here who voted for her husband. When I was on the town council. My son came up to be on one of the boards and I abstained, and that's what she should have done. Then you have Sal Bornero placed, uh, as the chairperson. Well, guess what? He wasn't supposed to be there. He told the members he wasn't supposed to be there. And guess what? He stayed for a while. Then the council went back and they placed Mr. Pionessa on. So guess what? Now Mr. Pionessa's on the board and now we have Beach and him who will have to vote. And quite frankly, I think that gives me pause too, because if it was my vote. My ethics would be much higher and I would not vote for it. So what I did is I called the State Office of Ethics to find out. If there was any reason that they should not be voting. Um, unfortunately, they don't cover municipalities. So they said to me that there could be a code of ethics on the town website. Well, guess what? Looked, not once, not twice, couldn't find it. So today I urge you to go above what you should be doing and be true leaders. And abstain because that's what you should do, because even the appearance. Of being unethical is wrong. So do your jobs and do it the right way.
Thank you. Next. Joanne.
Joanne Angelico Stetson, one eighty eight, Stony Mill Lane. Well, here we are again. I'm so disappointed that we have to deal with yet another attempt to revise the charter to include a politicized Board of Education. I was elected to serve on the Board of Ed from twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen. I had no idea what the political affiliations. I had no idea what the political affiliations were of most of my co-board members. It didn't matter and we didn't care. We weren't a board allegiance to a particular party and we conducted ourselves as such. As a nonpartisan board, we were focused and invested in understanding the challenges and needs associated with teaching and learning. It was our charge and our responsibility and a mission that we were there to fulfill without the distraction of politics and political agendas. During the the last charter change attempt in 2016, I was also a member of PROTEC, a political action committee. Formed by and consisting of Democrats and Republicans who successfully campaigned to keep the Board of Education nonpartisan. Under a nonpartisan board, this is what's occurred and what continues to occur in this district. CAP scores at the high school level exceeded the state average. On SATs, our students outperform state and national averages. Recently, Hubbard was recognized as one of the best elementary schools in the state. Based on performance and the number of students living in poverty. Willard reduced the achievement gap for students with intellectual disabilities. McGee has multiple staff members who are published and recipients of national awards. The district boasts administrators and teachers who have been recognized in the state and nationally. Professional development for staff includes initiatives out of Columbia College and Yale University. The list of accolades, achievements, and successes go on and on, and this is what is accomplished under a nonpartisan board. The challenges facing our current board, all Boards of Education for that matter, are serious and numerous. The number of students with mental health issues are profoundly troubling, and the numbers continue to rise at an alarming rate. We have students with IEPs and their teachers who are spread thin. We have teachers that are doing their best to challenge gifted and challenged uh, talented students without a special program. All of these issues and challenges have been and will continue to be addressed by a governing body that is cohesive, cooperative, and unified. And not divided by political agendas. I am concerned and quite frankly disgusted by some of our current board members who, while campaigning, made very clear that they were associated with a specific party. What I've seen from them thus far is a lack of humanity and understanding marginalized persons within our student body, which is disturbing. And a perfect example of why a Board of Education should not be politicized. They are a perfect example of how detrimental they are to our kids. And how disingenuous they are when rep- representing themselves as champions on behalf of our students. I'll close by stating that I saw certain individuals speak in favor of a partisan board at the audience of citizens at the last council meeting. If it wasn't so disturbing, I would have laughed at the irony that it was the same individual whose hysterical behavior and antics disrupted a board meeting to the extent that it was shut down. It was halted so that nothing was accomplished at a time when so much needed to be addressed for the welfare of our students. Make no mistake. This individual and those like her, who want a politicized board, have absolutely no concern for our students and their well-being and achievement. And have zero respect for the Board of Education as an entity. That was so clearly and blatantly displayed that night, and the only goal is a political agenda based in ignorance. It is my sincere hope and expectation that this revision will once again be rejected.
Okay, um, do we, have we gotten everybody here? So if I could go to our Zoom.
Justin, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I can kick off. Uh, I'm Justin Legus, 132 Whispering Brook Drive. As a lifelong resident of this town, a graduate of Griswold. Uh, give me a second. I'll turn my cameras. You can see me. Uh, as a lifelong resident of this town, a graduate of Griswold, McGee and Berlin High School, and a father of two young children. My comments regard the change to the charter around the Board of Education. When we're having racist flyers distributed in our neighborhoods and white nationalist stickers plastered on our newly renovated Main Street just last week. While tensions are already running so high, making the Board of Education partisan is unnecessarily divisive. The spirit of disunity among this town has never been higher in my lifetime here. And I feel that all of you who have run to serve on this council have seen firsthand how this kind of politicization can negatively impact the lives of people who are just trying to improve their community. Do we really wish to bring money and the baggage of a partisan election to another race in town? I cannot understand any beneficial outcome that can come from this change. But anyone who's truly being honest with themselves can clearly see the consequences of this change. I would respectfully ask one question. How will the politicization of the Board of Education benefit our children's education and the colleges they'll be able to attend? Simply put, it won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Whoever's there.
Mrs. Price, you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Thank you.
Let me, let me lower my hand. All right. Good evening. 21 at Price, 15 Overhill Drive here in Kensington. Um. So uh, many of you know the story of how Chris and I went on a walk one crisp fall sunny morning in October of 2020. A few months after we purchased our home here and walked past uh, this blackface doll, also known as a gollywop. On Farmington Avenue. It sat there on the lawn with a sign that said, "Join Berlin Upbeat." A long-established club with a motto of integrity, leadership, and service with hundreds of students as members. So let's start with that. Both the district and the school were notified and the offensive character was removed. And in this current day and age, if you don't know that a blackface doll is offensive and racist, shame on you. It seems that a certain citizen in town is attempting to change that narrative by providing false information with regards to its origins. It was, in fact, a racist character made by a student in upbeat. As the sign, it holds, asks students to join the club. So why pu- why go out and publicly put out false information surrounding this event? Why not take the opportunity to learn why it is a disgusting act? So that the same mistake isn't made again. Uh, either way, claiming that you didn't know isn't an acceptable excuse. Property, proper faculty oversight should have caught that, yet the concern is critical race theory. None of these students are being taught CRT. Not even a little bit. They are not in graduate school. So comparing CRT to equity and inclusion is real cringe. And as so, as so long as these racist, misogynistic, homophobic, and/or other hateful rhetoric in this town continues to exist. You will continue to hear our story loudly. Perspectives such as this also creates a climate where certain people feel emboldened to litter the streets of our town with racist, race, racist propaganda. So let's move on and you take one disgusting racist trope and then follow it up with another one by saying that it was supposed to be a scary voodoo doll type figure. So let's turn this into a learning, a teachable moment, okay? Um, voodoo, voodoo uh, is an African traditional religion, an ATR. That arrived here in the US with the first Africans brought as chattels in the early 17th century. Traditional African religions have faced violent persecution for centuries across the globe. But I'm going to speak specifically about New Orleans and the implementation of the Louisiana Black Codes of 1724, Code Noir. Where enslaved, the enslaved were forcibly and violently baptized into the Catholic faith. These enslaved Africans, upon recognizing similarities to their own religions, began to cloak their religious beliefs and deities behind a veil of Catholicism. This is called religious synchronization. This dynamic not only happened in New Orleans, but also throughout the Caribbean, giving birth to several other ATRs such as Palo and Santeria and other ones. Um, but like voodoo itself, any non-Christian belief seemed to be a genuine threat to Americans fiercely guarded social order and racial hierarchy. Over time, with the help of plenty of racist propaganda, misrepresentation in popular culture, and the media depictions of those practices. They were outlawed due to the deeply racist and patriarchal antebellum values as mentioned above. How about the Haitian Revolution? Did you guys learn about the Haitian Revolution? The most successful slave rebellion in history? Do you even know who Chastan Louverture was? And how voodoo played a big part in the success of that rebellion? Is is that being taught? It's very uncomfortable to hear, right? But it certainly isn't CRT. It's real American history, history that makes you uncomfortable or hurts your feelings is not. I repeat, not CRT. So yeah, I take umbrage at the feigned innocent yet racist statement of how it's supposed to be just a scary voodoo doll. And trying to insert a false narrative in hopes of what? Trying to further divide our town. This level of, this level of ignorance is is not only astounding, it's really sad. Because this is real history. This is, black history is still real American history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to address the council during audiences?
Okay, well, we're all set with the audience of citizens. We'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens. Thank you all. Um, for your input. Glad to hear it and appreciate you speaking with us. Mayor's update, um, the only thing I did want to mention was, uh, I didn't mention it last time, but that we didn't talk about it because, again, we had a full agenda like now, but the the flyers that were dropped in town. Disturbing, no question. Randomly done uh, around New England, uh, every ti- many towns in Connecticut, uh, months ago, recently, when they were dropped here in Berlin. Uh, apparently thrown out of car windows. You know, someone driving by, not from town, no connection to town whatsoever that we know of, that the police know of. They found him in Rhode Island and New Hampshire and all over the place. So disturbing, no matter what the story is, but. Please don't make any connection to Berlin. We can find no connection with anyone associated with that organization and they just seem to be driving down the highway, pulling off and throwing flyers in towns everywhere.
Well, with all due respect, sir, uh, last week I called the police and there were stickers placed on the new crosswalk that was built in town. There were stickers placed on every light pole uh, on Main Street.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's a bit presumptuous to say that it is impossible that Berlin does not have a race issue and that this could be an issue in this town.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that the the flyers have no apparent connection to Berlin that we can find. And they've been dropped in every town. Well, we, of course, but but I don't, I don't believe that's our community. I'm sorry to tell you that, but that's not our community. Those flyers didn't come from our community. No, I know, I'm pretty sure. I mean, they're dropped all around New England. Not just in Berlin. Uh, no, there's no connection that we could find. Not saying there couldn't be one. We don't know that. But just just be clear, no connection to Berlin whatsoever that we can find. If there's other stickers, please report it to the police. If you did, that's wonderful. We will, you know, continue to investigate that to the best of our ability. They tried to use some, um, I think ring cameras on some of the areas in the town that they were dropped. It was, I I want to say that was dark out. I don't know if the ring cameras typically don't catch license plates, so. Um, you know, they did the best they can, but uh, we don't, we don't tolerate that. And again. Drop everywhere. Some, I think someone did get arrested for it in Rhode Island. I heard from the chief, uh, same flyer, same group of people, apparently. So, but we do take it seriously. If we could find somebody that did it. What, we would charge them with whatever we could under the law, but we we couldn't find any connection here and to the car that apparently dropped them, so. Okay, so we got a lot to do. Let's move on to our consent agenda if we could. Did we take one thing off it? Do we?
Yeah. We want to just do um, one through five. Number six has been changed.
Okay, so we got one through five. Okay, real quick, I'll just uh. Prove a golf course issue, approve a prorated refund. $289.80 to be issued to Mr. John Klein, a credit in the, number two, a credit in the form of season pass to be used for one season with the next two golf seasons. Approve an appropriate $350, $25 donation from the Timberland Lady Niners Golf Club to deposit to the Timberland Golf account. Uh, number four, accept the donations, $565 appropriate to funds to the supplies expenditure account for the police department. And number five, transfer 32775 as detail on the accompanying spreadsheet to cover higher than budgeted expenditures in identified accounts pending approval by the Board of Finance. So those are the five consent items. Uh, unless you have any questions, we'll go and take a motion on those.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the five items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any, if there's no other comments or questions on those, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
I'll make a motion to um, the former consent agenda item six as one A, since it has been revised into our new business.
Okay. So one A, we're gonna wait till, I guess, we would do one and then one A.
One A, yeah.
Yeah. So.
In motion, so.
Yeah, just that we will make a motion on that.
Okay, just it. Adjusted.
Okay, and and that was the permission for consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Sage Park Pavilion, uh, for the Patel family picnic. So they're gonna uh, uh, get the proper insurance and uh, get their approval by Park and Rec. So all those in favor? All right.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. Okay, new business.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The first item on the agenda is the proposed leash free area at Pistol Creek. You recall, uh, in December 2021, passed the leash ordinance. And at that time, you designated Bicentennial Park Meadow as an off-leash area. Until another area in the town could be designated as one. So as we discussed the last meeting. Uh, Mayor, you, myself, uh, Chair of the Parks and Rec Mission, Cross Country Coach, McGee Middle School, Brendan of Parks and Rounds. Walked around Pistol Creek and uh, we came up with a recommendation. Which is right there, and all of you have the map. And the motion today, uh, for your consideration is to uh, designate this area as an off-leash area. Uh, one thing that I would add is, um, you know, we are having conversations with animal control. And um, one of the things they have recommended is to fence in all four sides. So um, that's something I'll put on the table. For the, some of the reasons that um, dogs might go into the, the um, overgrowth area there and might not be able to come find their way back. So. Of course, you're not voting on that today, but I'm voting on the location, hopefully. But that is a recommendation that we have from staff. Discussion.
Yes. We have discussed this issue now for probably in excess of two years. We have um, listened to input from everyone in town. On many different occasions, obviously, went to the ordinance committee, uh, and we had many, many public hearings as part of the ordinance committee. Listen to conservation. At the, the town as a whole. We ultimately came to a conclusion that we strengthened our leash law. So, so one of the things I heard was that Sage Park, different areas are off, off-leash areas. That's not correct. There was no off-leash area right now that would be allowed under our current ordinance, o- other than the the Meadow at Bicentennial for for the short term. Uh, and we we set that till the end of this month. So now we're at that, that point. Uh, we looked at many different options, looked at a lot of different towns, Rocky Hill, surrounding towns, uh, got information from towns downstate. Uh, familiar with town, dog parks in Stanford and Los Angeles where I used to live, and all around the country, Virginia. Um, kind of familiar with them everywhere, all over the place. A lot of different versions um, of them, just about every. Lot of different versions of them. Just about every single one, though, is fenced, large, small, they're fenced. And obviously, you know, part of it's a safety issue for the dogs and people. When we look, when we looked at the dog bites in town, there was two or three very serious dog bites over the last few years, all occurred in neighborhoods. Between property owners and I think one, the dog might have ran out. On the from a house onto someone, bit someone on the sidewalk, I believe. Hence, when we were in all these discussions on the ordinance, we we made that very strong leash law. We implemented that strong leash law a few months ago and said, listen, anywhere in town, especially some of the sports fields and anywhere where people are gathering or and or in neighborhoods. They must be on a leash or a lead. I think of a certain length. I forget what the length was, but. So that leaves us with one off-leash area. What to do with it? Lot of research, lot of time, as I mentioned. And I think we came to the conclusion with the last group we walked around was Pistol Creek would be the place to try it. And I would agree with fencing the whole thing. I I think looking at, you know, the brushes stick there, but yes, can dog get around it? I'm sure they, if they want to, they can. And the other point that that was brought up tonight was valid is we don't want wild animals running into it and getting stuck in there either. So. Valid point, the whole thing should be leashed. That's in excess of an acre. I think it's forty-nine thousand square feet, an acre, if I'm not mistaken, is forty-three thousand around there, square feet, something like that. So it's over an acre. It's a very large area. We took great pains to make sure we do not interfere. With any of the other activities, the the boys' track team, anything that goes on at. Pistol Creek, there's a parking lot there already. And people, you know, every time I go there, people are walking their dogs on a leash and that can continue. We're not blocking any paths. Certainly not the the path on the fairway there where we're putting the, we'll try and put the fence and see how that works out. So we're trying to be as. Inclusive to everyone and everyone's point of view, very difficult issue understood. But I think the point is to to try this and I think it's a trial. I mean, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but we would slowly. I know someone mentioned they're worried about the time, August first, it's obviously quickly, but I I think we would. Phase that out by signage and some enforcement. And once we get the fence up, phase in, I don't know where the state of the fence stands.
If I may comment, we are very careful. We, in the language that we that you passed, counsel.
Right.
Said around, he didn't give a timeframe. If you find a place, we would.
Right, okay, so we're, yeah.
If you can't get the fence up in thirty days, you.
Yeah, yeah. And again, you know, I mean, I don't know, I, you know, I've had many dogs and maybe the people that are walking their dogs on a. On a leash, they could certainly take advantage of. There'll be a gate on either end. They can go in there and let their dog off leash and run around for a while, you know? I mean, that's really what it's for. The dog parks in Cromwell and Rocky Hill, they're much smaller than that, much, much smaller and people are, you know, their dogs are off-leash in a small area. With, you know, potential issues with dogs, but in checking with a couple of towns, they don't seem to have any overriding issues. We certainly have had none, not one report going back many, many years to the off-leash area at Bicentennial, not one dog bite that that we could find. With the police department or animal control. I, you know, I could, but you know, that's just to say that. The purpose of that is to say that I think the off-leash area can be safe. I think the fence is important. To keep other dogs and animals from in and out of there and and, you know, kind of control it. And that's what most towns do, even down, I think in Fairfield County, there's some that are much bigger, but they all. Generally have some type of fence around it. Some are probably bigger than the acre and a half or so that we're looking at, but. So we've tried to take everybody's opinion and and make, I guess, as many people happy as possible. Understanding we're never gonna satisfy everyone and I understand that and and, you know, we strive our best on the council to do that. So. You know, we could try it, take a vote tonight and try that area. Again. We're gonna add another crosswalk. I think that was brought up somewhere. We could add another crosswalk to the area. So when they walk across and, of course, we will post many signs. And, you know, step up some enforcement to make sure that the dogs are on the leash until they get into the gated area. That's that's the goal. And and to have our park grounds crew and to police that area and make sure it's it's kept up. It'll be a lot easier to police in that fenced-in area. And probably it has been in the past in other places, but, you know, we've looked at Bicentennial and looked at the history and just looked at everything and. You know, to put in a parking lot, let's say we wanted to put in a parking lot at Bicentennial. I I mean, minimum a hundred grand, maybe two hundred grand, I don't know, to pave a whole new parking lot. And build it up there. So it just it just is not the area for it. We have a huge parking lot at Pistol Creek. That's one of the other things we looked at that is utilized already. And we will give people their one unleashed area in town. And the rest of the areas have to be on the leash and and that's that's what the ordinance says now, other than whatever we designate. As off-leash, which ultimately will be the Pistol Creek, but we're gonna try it too. It's not, nothing's written in stone. We wanna get the fence up, get people used to it, phase people, you know, out of Bicentennial, phase them over there. And we'll give it a try. Let's see. No one's wanted to touch the issue for twenty years. People are afraid of it. So, you know, we took it on and we we tried to. Get everyone involved that we could and everyone has been involved. I mean, we've heard from all aspects of Berlin, so. That's 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 where we're at. So what else, remember we get fellow council members have to say?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll go first. You know, I'm a dog lover. I still have a dog. He's kind of old. I grew up on Orchard Road, so when I would take my dog, I'd go to the sheer property, but. I'm one of those people that always thought my dog should be on a leash. I was always afraid he'd get away and something would happen and I didn't want that liability. So. I'm up for at least trying this, moving it forward. I think maybe as the town grows, maybe we need a second place. You know, why can't we have a place a little closer to the center of town? Like you said, we got a parking lot here and maybe that'll attract more people to want to renovate that building that's here and get more use out of it. We don't do anything with it, really, right? I I think this this will work out well and we could always revisit Bicentennial Park, but I think we have to move forward with this.
Thank you.
Folks, what is our assessment for? Whether or not this is working, like we're talking about this is something we can revisit if it's not working. Is it something that we're gonna have a conversation about in six months? And what's gonna be our guidelines for the effectiveness of the current arrangement?
Yeah, I think, you know, if we. Kind of step up town attention to it, but you know, once the fence is up. And, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's August, September, fence probably is not up till September, I'm guessing. So, you know, maybe through the winter and then after that, we'll see, you know, maybe in the spring, we revisit it. I mean, you have people using it in the fall, the winter. I don't know how much depends on the snow, I guess, but.
I would think we would look at compliance, traffic, flash, all of those issues.
Input from the neighbors, perhaps?
Yes.
Well, from the neighbors, but and what?
Yeah, for the the, that's my biggest concern about. The current arrangement is is the overall impact on the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of, like you said, traffic, safety. Excrement was mentioned several times. I think these are obviously evaluations that we need to be making and those are the biggest concerns that were brought up.
Yes.
In public hearings and those are still issues that that I myself am concerned about. Yeah, so.
I mean, we we took took great pain. We looked around Pistol Creek too, to find other locations possibly that were even more remote, but. None of them work. I think that's a fifty-acre golf course there. You know, this one seems to be and someone else, I don't know if that was in the written stuff about it being muddy. I've been there all on all seasons. It's not muddy. It's a fairway and a golf course and they're still maintained like that. It's not muddy at all. It's a. Should be a pretty dry area, but it's dry out. I mean, if it's raining, it's raining, but, you know, we certainly will take, continue to take neighbors' comments as always at any council meeting. And, you know, if they bring a concern to us about that area, we'll make sure through the police, through animal control, we'll we'll address it and and see how it goes, you know? It seems like Pistol Creek. The times that I've been there, which is quite a bit in the last year or so. Most, it seems like everybody's pretty well behaved there. I mean, I hope that will continue. I don't see why it would not. But, you know, but hence the fence, to keep the off-leash dogs, you know, at least away from folks or. You know, don't want to walk there with a dog off-leash and we all, we certainly understand that. That's the reason for it, but. Yes, anyone else? Anyone else?
Mark?
Yes, yeah, Peter. Yes, Peter, I'm sorry. Yes.
I, I. I unfortunately have to oppose this. The day we were there, I saw a lot of friends my age and young mothers and strollers asking what was going on and I explained. That they wanted a dog park where dogs could run free. And they were concerned, not so much as inside, but people dropping off their dogs, taking them off leash and letting them go before they get in that area. Just because some people keep wild animals, that's fine. I don't think it's the town's responsibility to fence in an area so they could run wild. That's my opinion and I would urge my other council members to vote.
I appreciate that, Peter. Yes.
Councilor Russo, we are planning first an educational process. We won't be ticketing people on the first day. Give a warning and if they continue to drop their dogs off at the main. Parking lot there, we will ticket them. So there will be enforcement and that's another way that you could see if it's gonna work on us.
Yeah, and and again, we 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 tried to pick this area that's away from. I know it's not away from the people using the park and walking, but away from any homes and, you know, it's kind of smack dab in the middle there. But again, it's easily reachable by the parking lot. And again, they will need to be on their leash till they get in that fenced area and close the fence. So we will, you know, enforce it to the best of our ability with the PD and the and the animal control folks. Okay.
I was curious about one thing too. Ms. Misselli brought us a map last meeting that a proposed park that was. Back behind Pistol Creek, that seemed to be away from the area where the camps are being held for. When the kids are there for the summer and that type of thing. Is that something that we we did research as well? It seemed like it's a pretty big, even bigger area than.
We looked at a couple areas over there. One is the camps area. The other side of the road was another one we looked at, but which was the most remote was on the. Middle, border Middleton on the other side of the road there. But it was a big, I mean, it would take. Probably hundreds of thousands of dollars of work to level out, you know, it was a big dip. And so, I mean, we we looked at more remote areas, but. It just would take a lot more effort, time and money. Some people brought up funding. This is certainly the most economical one. The 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 grass is there. I mean, it's a fairway, it's maintained. And the cost will be the fence and the cost of some enforcement, but the fence is the major expense to the tune of, I don't know, fifteen thousand dollars, maybe. Sixteen, I'm sorry, month by a thousand. But, you know, so it was the most economical place also to try and see if we can make it work. So certainly we will keep, as we have said, we will keep monitoring it. And see how it goes. Nothing's written in stone. We could change. It's an ordinance. We could, you know, if we have to change it and make it better or or do something to it, we can always do that. So. Okay. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to designate the area Pistol Creek, as noted on the attached map, as a leash-free area for dogs.
Thank you. Second on that?
I second it.
And before we go, one last comment. I I wanted to say that, you know, we. We talk about overriding our commissions and that that's disturbing to me to even talk about that. Because they're there for a reason. I'm not saying that the council can't override things, but in many of them we can. I mean, planning and zoning, imagine if planning and zoning voted down some development, the council overrides it. I mean, we just can't. That's not how we run our town. We've never, we, it's just not the way to do it, you know, right or wrong. And of course, there's rules and statutes against it, but I mean, that's just not something we would do and. We had a lot of talks with the Conservation Commission, with the members and, you know, there there's a lot of reasons why we're moving it. It's not just some, oh, let's go move it. That that was not. Taken very, very, the whole thing has been taken very seriously and trying to, again, get everyone together. So, but when commissions feel that strongly about it. Their volunteers too, like all of us, they're appointed, not elected, but nonetheless, you know, when they have opinions, we try and listen to those opinions and they had obviously very good reasons. There was many spots we looked at in Bicentennial that. Had other issues, you know, beside wine sip. So anyway, that that's not something that we want to start going down that road and overriding. The commissions that advise us because that they have the expertise to advise us. All right, so we we have the motion on the floor. Take a vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion, motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
All right, agenda number two.
Number two.
Is the recommendations of the Charter Revision Commission. So we had the public hearing, slide twelve. We have fifteen days, which is by tomorrow. To decide if you want to send the charter revision back as recommended by the commission or just any changes to the document.
What I would first like to start with is just if Attorney Dinafrio could just go over the the V and A, because the last time in the meeting and a little bit tonight too. There's just some misconceptions, I think, about perhaps what the language is. And again. This is language coming to us from the ordinance committee. We've reviewed it, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts here and what got sent back to us. Many sections were covered, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page and we we, I I remind the council that you you vote what you know, what you want to do or you're sending your recommendations, but. We all were unanimous when we made the recommendation to the Charter Review Commission about the V and A. It was a unanimous vote from the whole council to to. Switch it out and and try and make it an ordinance.
Sure. So it it sounds like from the public hearing and from one of the comments tonight, that perhaps. The folks that are commenting are not reading the whole charter because if you look at. Section eight dash seventeen, which is where the. Earl and V and A is currently situated, it's correct that that section. Has been deleted with the exception of eight seventeen one, saying it's the intent of the charter that public nursing service. Shall be provided by the town as set forth in the Code of Ordinances. But you have to go to pages fifty-one and fifty-two to see the new content. And eleven dash one dash two from the Charter Revision Commission's draft. Specifically says it is the intent of this charter that public nursing service shall be continued to be provided by the Berlin V and A. In the manner as had been set forth in eight seventeen one through eight seventeen five of the charter until the adoption of an ordinance as required by the charter. The the issue that the council has had the last two years and the Board of Finance. And anyone else who's looked at it on behalf of the town is that the existing language of the charter. Does not provide the town with any flexibility. So since the town does not currently have an alternative preferred method of providing the services required. By law and required by the existing eight dash seventeen of the charter, the Charter Revision. Somebody else talking? The Charter Revision Commission proposed to do this in a manner that continues with the status quo until such time. As the council adopts an ordinance to provide for an alternative method. So. The statement about there being no reference to the Berlin V and A, apparently whoever said that didn't read pages fifty-one and fifty-two.
Yeah, good. And again, this is, as we have discussed in the last, I don't know, many years I've been on the council and. Gentleman next to me been on longer than me, we, you know, wanted to. Figure out how to make it work better and of course, not almost double their appropriated money. And I think there were some other comments that I heard about. It was a nonprofit. Was made in the last last meeting comments. That's it's not a nonprofit in Berlin. It is in some towns in the state. But and other towns do not go over their budget by other departments in the town. I don't believe are going over their budget by a million dollars. That I know of. Generally speaking. And that's been happening for many years and no one even seemed to pay attention to it. So, you know, we we need to work on it and. Make it better, make it stronger, make it more fiscally respectable. make it more fiscally responsible. That's the goal of it, not to eliminate it. That's not the goal. So anyway, that's that one. And, and let me just go on, let me, let me just get through what some changes that. So that's that. I would propose we don't change that. You guys have your moment in the sun in a moment. And number two, I would just say the town manager, a couple of people spoke about that, until you've tried to find a town manager in today's world and by today's world, I mean, the last number of years, it's very difficult. There, there are senior positions, um, they're sought after, um, they're hard to find. And we're looking for senior people that have experience managing towns or experience in another area that would make them a good town manager. And they're senior people with homes and children in school systems in Meriden and Newington and towns right around us. So to make them move to town, in today's world, really just doesn't make a lot of sense. In Connecticut, if you're in Texas, you're in El Paso and you gotta move to Dallas. I mean, yeah, you're gonna have to move to Dallas. But in, in, in Connecticut, everyone's within what? Probably we're in the exact center of the state. Uh, so we're told and I believe we have some coordinates for that at some point. But, um, you know, they're not that far away and we've lost out on managers on several times in history. Uh, you know, because we, I guess there was one in Meriden right before my time, but they wanted them and they were gonna make a move from Meriden to Berlin. You know, and, and it just, um, doesn't seem to make any sense. I understand the other side of the argument is that while they don't live in town, they don't care. That, no, they're professionals, they're managing the town, they report to the town council, you're elected officials. Um, that, that's just not the case. That's not understanding what a town manager is if, if people, and I've seen that out on social media and it's just not, it's not a good argument. Um, because that's not who we're looking for. We're looking for the professional. Um, as all our department heads are, many of them, most of them do not live in town. Um, some do, some don't. It's okay either way. But it's hard to find, uh, the quality people we're looking for with that requirement, because typically they're senior people. The last time, um, you know, we didn't have very many applicants. We're so very fortunate to have Mr. Mr. Orosch here, um, you know, that came to us. And, uh, you know, we're very lucky, but it's, most towns, it's very difficult. I know the surrounding towns, I know Rocky Hill very well. They've had trouble, um, you know, they had, they had a temporary town manager there, I think. They finally decided to make a move to town. And I think, I don't know if he quit yet, or I don't know what's happening, but all the towns have the same issue. So that's, that's the reason behind it, not just because we want to change our charter. We're not doing any of this just, just to change our charter. Um, we're doing it to try and make the town work better. That's what we're trying to do. But again, ultimately, if, if that goes through to a question, when the Charter Review Commission reviews it finally, then that's still up to the voters. And so you all have the last choice and that's the way it should be. So BOE. Uh, we had a little caucus amongst us, uh, majority on the council here and here, here's our suggestion for the BOE. Three words added to the BOE, no other changes. Um, looking at section two dash eight, Board of Education, about somewhere in the middle there, no party designation shall appear on the ballot in connection with names of candidates for said board. That's the change on the ballot. That's the only change. No. Parties nominating people, nothing, no other changes. That's it, three words. That would be our recommendation back to the Charter Review Commission, which would strengthen that. There's no party affiliation on the ballot. That's our recommendation. We can discuss it. And then we also talked about, um, so the parties wouldn't nominate, it's the whole, the whole section stays the same. Nominated, you're independent, however you, you get nominated, you gotta get your petition signed.
May I ask a question about that?
Let me finish. So number four, and then, and then we'll talk, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about, uh, please. So many other changes were in this document. I, I, I know what happened last time. Just people are not going to read it when they're on the ballot box. They're just not going to read it. So we came up with three that we thought were important, subject to discussion. And remember, this is all just recommendations from us going to the Charter Review Commission. They're the ones that are going to have to decide what they think wants to go forward. So one of them that has, has been important to us has been, and I don't care what order that would be, this would be question four. The way we're looking at it, this is the V and A, the town manager, the BOE, three questions. Four would be some of the other cleanup, but just way too much. I, I think it just will not, and I think what happened, happened last time. We had so much stuff in that question, I think people just said no. Uh, and I don't blame them because there was just too much to read. And most of the other changes here were language, language that we wanted to kind of clean up. But, um, overwhelming. So the five thousand to twenty-five thousand, that was a budget thing that we're trying to do that we don't, it wouldn't have to come, right? I think it's five thousand now. We want to raise it to twenty-five thousand, right? Ten, ten, ten to twenty-five, yeah. So that's so, the, the smaller approvals would not have to come through the council. The other one is the fire marshal. I think what, what, what we're moving, that's, uh, six, so that, the first one was three dash eight. The fire marshal six dash nine, six dash ten, we're, we're taking him out of the fire department, right?
It's right now incorrectly shown as work for the, under the fire department.
Which he's not.
Fire marshal has nothing to do with the fire.
Correct. So we want that out. And we also want, I think we want to take out the word, isn't there, um, in six dash ten volunteer? What, what, what we're, what, what we're trying to change in this section is, uh, we love our volunteer fire department. They're wonderful. Um, they do an unbelievable job. They devote their life to it. They get paid a little bit, you know, there's a little, little financial incentive, but they're not doing it for that reason. And, um, but it's getting much more difficult for every town in Connecticut, every town in the United States to find volunteers, right? Uh, you know, this all started when we were farming communities, people worked in town. The fire bell rang, everybody, you know, with the fire department could respond. That's not the case anymore, unfortunately. We're lucky we have, we have it. We want to keep it as long as possible. But the day is coming, unfortunately, like some of our towns around the state, they start usually with hiring maybe a couple paid firemen that would get the trucks, the apparatus out of the firehouse and get it to the, get it to the location of the fire or accident, wherever they're going. And then the other volunteers would join them, but so we would save a little bit of time there. So we just wanted to change that, right? And I think Orosch, it's, uh, and, and Jeff, didn't we always take, I, I think we just have to take the word volunteer out, is that right? If I remember that section, six dash ten, just so down the road. And we all hope it's far down the road because, you know, we start hiring, we have a paid fire department someday. We know what that will do to our taxes and, and chains, you know, the town, but, and we hope we don't go there, but if we need to, we don't want to have to, you know, have to worry about the charter saying it, well, it has to be a volunteer fire department, because someday, hopefully not in any of our lifetimes, but it may not, it may not be there. So I believe it's in six dash ten. That dash nine, okay. So. Is that? Fire marshal. Yeah, I thought it was.
Six, six, nine relates to the discretion to, um, adjust the volunteer fire department, department in the form of an ordinance. So it'd be six, nine.
So we want to take out volunteer, the word, right? Or no? Well, how would we? Is that making it strong enough or we can? I just want to make sure, I know the fire marshal is one thing, but, right?
I thought it was discussed in the last meeting.
Yeah, did we?
The effect of removing the term volunteer.
Yeah.
I have, I have notes that the effect of that would be that you cannot maintain a fire department without it being paid. That was my understanding of it. I, and Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was my understanding. The concern that I raised about it was if you eliminate the word volunteer.
Right.
Then one interpretation of it is that fire protection will be provided through other than volunteer companies. That's why I had recommended and written in that edit.
But it's.
Or as otherwise provided by this charter or by ordinance, because what happened was Jim Simons had made the recommendation for the edit at the Charter Revision Commission level. And I discussed with the Charter Revision Commission, the need, i- i- if you're gonna, if you're gonna give the impression that you're going away from that direction.
Right.
And that's not the intention. That's a problem. So what we did was we said it'll be provided by volunteer companies or as otherwise provided by charter or by ordinance. Because if you get to the point where you need paid firefighters, you're gonna have to do it by ordinance or charter revision anyway.
Okay.
Because right now you have no.
So, so what you put in there, that, that, that's your change. We could.
Yeah, or as otherwise provided by charter or.
Okay, that's all. I ju- I just want to make sure, because that, you know, that's important someday. We're, that, we are gonna face that someday. So we want to make sure we can get there, um, if we need to. And let's hope again, it's not for a while, but there's that one. And then the last one I would, uh, look forward that we talked about was, I think it's four, four, one, the, the BOF, um, Board of Finance, not serving on other boards and commissions. That applies to no one else. That doesn't apply to council members. It doesn't apply to anybody. I don't know why we would single out one board for that. So I think that should come out. And they should be able to serve, you know, on, on voluntary committees, like, you know, whether it's the ordinance committee or whether it's the, uh, senior center committee, whatever committee we have. I mean, you know, we rely on these people that volunteer for, to be elected or volunteer on the boards and commissions. They've developed an expertise in certain areas and sometimes it's hard if we can't use some of them on these other boards and commissions with the knowledge that they have. So I don't know why we single that out. Um, I understand there's probably another argument to it. We can make that argument about every board and commission in town and the council too, you know, we're not prohibited from serving on other committees. Why would the Board of Finance be? We're all elected, we're all elected volunteers. So I would, I would say that would be number three. Or number A, B, C, I guess, and number four. And that would be it. That would be it for our thoughts on this. Just all the other stuff, way, just way too much. It, it will not, it's not gonna, I, I know what's gonna, we know what's gonna happen. People are just gonna, I can't read all this. And it's, so what's the point of frustrating people? They already have another question on the ballot this year, right from the state, right? Some constitutional question, right?
Yes, on absentee voting.
Right, so they got, they got enough to do.
Early voting, excuse me.
So that's where we're at. That's, that's some thoughts for discussion.
The, so the, the question I had was, when you're talking about the Board of Ed and the language change you made.
Correct.
Just to be clear, what, what would that mean then to what would be the revised, revisals? Is it basically bringing it back to where it was before that there would be, if you're not putting parties on the ballot, that would technically mean that we'd still remain what you call a nonpartisan board?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the parties will not nominate people or whatever. That's, nothing else changes in the section.
But what about the provision that says that nomination should be accomplished through the provisions in the general statutes? Because that, the, the mechanism for nominating the candidates would still conform to the nomination provisions in the general statutes. In which case, uh, my understanding is that you're still going through the party to.
No?
No.
Okay.
My understanding is you're saying dump all this stuff that we wrote back to the existing language, except add the words on the ballot after no party designation shall appear, which is what happens now, but you're looking to just clarify that, that no party designation shall appear on the ballot in connection with the names of the candidates. So you're still petitioning. Everything's the same.
Everything's the same.
Correct.
Everything's the same. All the, all the edits are gone.
This, nothing, nothing changes. It is as it is now.
Okay, I see. Okay, so you're not, okay, there we go. So the changes are not to the, the recommendations by the Charter Revision there.
Well, it's our recommendation back.
But the, by not changing, we're, we're not changing the charter as it is.
Correct.
And we're just providing an additional provision that.
Clarifying.
Clarifying the fact that candidate party designations will not appear on the ballot.
Which they don't now, right? But, but that's always, to me, that statement's been a little bit ambiguous. What does that mean? So this just clears it up. This actually strengthens our nonpartisan board, if you look at it that way, because we're saying there's no party affiliation on the ballot.
So the recommendation from the council, if I'm hearing correctly, and you guys haven't.
Well, from, from.
You haven't reached a consensus on this yet, but what you're saying is it would be to recommend to the Charter Revision Commission the rejection of the proposed edit.
Yes.
And instead, just suggesting that those three words be added.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
I understand.
So that's it. Um, that's all I would, that's all, we, we talked about this a little bit, you know, offline in the caucus and that's all we would want to send forward. I think more of it, it's just too much. We learned that lesson last time. There was more complicated changes last time. These are relatively simple changes, um, but the more you put on there, I think the more people just don't pay attention. And I, I don't, you know, it's a lot to take in, if you got, I mean, there was a lot of changes and I'm sorry to the staff. I know a lot of them you wanted. I would just, we were trying to clean it up, but maybe for the next charter review at some point, it's just too much to, too much to have people.
I mean, it dominated the public conversation. That's, that was our fear at the start.
Yeah, it's, well, and, and remember, when we started this and we talked about on the council, what do we say? Let's keep it simple, remember? We did, we did say that.
Exactly.
When we sent it off to the Charter Review. And, you know, again, we always know that when it goes to the Charter Review, we lose control of it. And that's always the fear when you do a charter review. It's changing the town constitution. But that's what we voted to do, but we sent most of these recommendations forward, some of them, not all of them. And, um, you know, so now it's back and now some of us are saying, keep it simple.
Was it the entire caucus that agreed to that arrangement?
Well, um, Charlie kinda, we, we tried to like, I mean, he's, he was listening. I mean, he's in a little sensitive position. So when he gets back to his, uh, caucus, I mean, to his charter review, I mean, he's hearing what we're suggesting. He's, he's certainly heard it when we discussed it, but, you know, I mean, if we, yeah, I mean, he, we, we, we try to kind of keep them just, just listen to what we're saying and it's gonna come back to you. All of you, you know, on the Charter Review Commission and do what you're gonna do with our, remember, these are just recommendations that we're
Right.
suggesting and, you know, um, hopefully they listen. Um, but we, we don't know that. We can't be sure of that, but that's our job is to make the recommendations and they're gonna go off and do what they're gonna do. So that's what we would propose, to keep it simple and, um, fix some things that need fixing and others unfortunately will have to wait down the road.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
I know I've been accused of being unethical and racist tonight, but I would very much like to hear from the other side of the aisle if they have any suggestions, because I am on this commission.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to listen to everybody.
Sure.
Of course, it, it, it's, yeah, your time now.
Yeah, we, I know that we had discussed, um, a, a couple of things. The, obviously the V and A was a big part of why we wanted to do a charter revision here. Um, and what we want to do. I think one of the things that sort of at least made me nervous and other people nervous is the fact that if we bring it to ordinance, we still are very much required to provide the, the service of medical help to the, the people in town that need it. And it, it's a very complicated thing for us to be able to, to take into ordinance. So for me, I would really want to see a, a very detailed written out ordinance. I mean, it could look just like what it does i- in the charter itself. Um, or what we could do is change the wording in the V and A charter, just to basically keep it in the charter and make it to, um, instead of saying should provide, we could always put, change something very easily in a language to say may provide uh, in the charter as far as the V and A is concerned. And then that way, we could keep it there and, and not have to really go through the whole instance of running out an ordinance and making sure that we're compliant, because, you know, at, at the end of the day, I understand that we are taking on a load, a debt load when it comes to the V and A. And I think that was really the concern of, of what we're trying to accomplish as far as what to do with the V and A. Um, I know that, you know, in the beginning, we were near a million dollars in debt each year. I think Orosch and, and the staff at the V and A have done a really nice job of bringing it down. Obviously, it still is a, a lot of debt for us to incur. But as far as, as providing a medical service to the people in town, I think sometimes you, you have to incur debts like that to be able to provide a service that we need to do for our townspeople. Um, so for me, I would like to see that as far as the, the change in the charter is concerned and keep the V and A in the charter for now, just to change the language so that it would help, um, help maybe even further offset some costs.
I just commented it. As I understand the language, nothing would change until an ordinance replaced it. It wouldn't sunset until the ordinance brought it up to speed. So I know the ordinance would be complicated, but it would give the town the ability to adjust things. That's why.
Right. And again, basically what I'm trying to say is that we sort of have it already written out in the charter and just a, a simple change of, of a little pieces of language here and everything might end up assuming what we need.
I'm not sure that's gonna give us, and we'll, we'll defer to Mr. Dinafrio, but I, I, I'm not sure that'll give us the, what the word I'm looking for, the, um, uh, mechanism to really, if we need to change some things, not eliminate it, but change some things. And that seems to be the problem. I mean, we had a member of the council that was with the VNA for 20 years. That member never helped us do anything and yet someone stood up here tonight and called us unethical with some stuff. That was the most insulting thing I ever heard, because we're anything but. I mean, all this is being done in public here. We're talking to the public, we're listening to the public, read the social media, read what everybody says, letters to the citizen. We take it all in, we're all up here in public talking about it. So I'm not sure what unethical they're talking about. I think there's other things we've heard about on the council this year that were unethical and that went to the Board of Ethics. So for people to stand up here and call us unethical, that's very insulting to me personally and to all of us up here. It should be, but, um, we're, we're not putting anything over on the voters. It's their vote in the end, ultimately, it's going to the voters and no, no matter what. We're just trying to make the town run better. That's our, that was our job, that's what we got elected to do. And I, I'm just afraid that, I'm sorry, that was off on a commentary, but I, I, I can't, I had to get it out. I'm sorry, it had to come out, because, you know, come on people, we're all up here, we're getting the big paycheck to be here too. So, um, we're trying to do what's best for our town, but I, I'm just worried we won't be able to do anything to it then. That's what scares me, but Jeff, you tell, you know, we're trying to, you know, get through this.
There's, look, there's, there's two approaches you can take, okay?
Yeah.
We, and, and we've had this conversation for six years.
Right.
From when I had to go to a Board of Finance meeting in 2016
Yeah.
to explain that they couldn't eliminate the Berlin VNA, right?
Right.
And the conversation we've had for six years is if you want to make a change, there's two ways to do it in the charter. One is to provide a specific alternative vehicle to provide these public health nursing services. There is no recommendation as of yet from the town on what the better alternative would be to provide the same quality and level of care, okay? So then the other option is to give the town the flexibility when and if it discovers a superior way of providing the same level of care and the same level of services, give the town the flexibility to move on it without going through a whole nother charter revision. And so we came up with this provision that keeps the status quo intact unless and until such time as an ordinance is adopted by the council, that they may never come. We didn't put a date in there. We didn't say within one year or within three years, we didn't put a date in there. So if, if it comes to pass that you're not able to find, or you're not able to pass an ordinance for a new method of providing the service, then the Berlin VNA remains as is. But there's no, there's no third option. You either provide another way of doing it or you provide for a transition. But when you find another way of doing it, or you do nothing at all, which would defeat what your specific charge to CRC was.
That is, uh, precisely it, as always, counselor, you hit the nail on the head. Uh, but yeah, that's the problem. We, we don't, we just have looked at this, looked at this and looked at this. And by the way, it was interesting that you, you, you did remind me that the Board of Finance, I think someone actually was in the room that used to be on the Board of Finance, they're the ones that want to get rid of the VNA, not the council, just so we're clear on that. So I don't know, I remember what that individual spoke on, but he was very much leading the charge to get rid of the VNA. But anyway, uh, you know, it's just, it's funny how history changes things, I guess. We do want to learn, keep, we, we do want to, someone else mentioned tonight, we want to learn about history. We absolutely do, we don't want to forget history, um, because there's good and bad there. But, um, that's, so that's the thing. I, I'm afraid, again, I, I, listen, I don't think we want to tackle this ordinance, I don't think any of us really want to. It's not gonna be easy and I don't think we have an answer yet, but when we, we're hoping we come up with that answer and then we could maybe do it, you know? I, I mean, maybe there is a better way, maybe there isn't a better way. And maybe, as you said, maybe we're just gonna have to eat some of the cost and if we, you know, I, I don't know. I don't think we know that yet. We've had a lot of people look at it, some consultants too.
Yeah.
And nobody seems to have, uh, but we know many towns have eliminated it too. Some have not, so some have a little bit different structure. So there's probably still more homework to do. Listen, we did two to three years homework on, on an unleashed area. I think we could do some serious research on the VNA, okay? I mean, it's, listen, we're dog lover and it's important, but the VNA is, you know, obviously very important to all of our folks with, with medical care. So that's all, I, I just, we're gonna tie our hands again. And that was really, that was probably the single reason we opened up the charter. That really was the reason, you know, we, we got some other things in here, but that was the reason to just give us some, if we need it.
Right.
And we don't, and we don't know yet. I agree, it's frustrating, we can't seem to figure it out, which is frustrating.
The other, the other, if I could just add one more thing, the other point that wasn't lost on the Charter Revision Commission in terms of this option is that the solution may not exist yet. In other words, if you look around at, you know, classic Connecticut, 169 municipalities, 169 different ways of doing things. Some municipalities provide this service through in-house capabilities. That tends to be municipalities with populations in excess of 50,000. Some municipalities participate in a regional VNA. Some municipalities receive services through a hospital nursing service. So, you know, it may well be there's kind of this undercurrent of regionalization that really, because it's Connecticut and it's New England, hasn't caught on the way I think the General Assembly thought it would. But it may well be that at some point this gets legislated, you know, like police dispatch.
Yeah, right, right.
Or that, or that, or that there's, you know, mergers or consolidations that create entities that provide synergies and economies of scale that allow you to provide the legally required service at the quality that the Berlin VNA provides it at without losing your shirt.
Yeah, we see, well, we know Connecticut well, we know New England well, boy, you can't get that regionalization going. It's very, very difficult for, like you said, 169 towns gotta do 169 different ways. 169 police departments or however many there are, resident troopers, whatever we do, but yeah, it's very difficult.
In terms of the conventional wisdom, is there, is there any sort of model in your experience with working with different municipalities that works particularly well, that achieves that balance of flexibility and quality of care and cost effectiveness? I mean, I'm sure.
I, I think the, I think the problem is the census.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not really it, right?
Very complicated, it's probably gonna take longer than, how to describe this. People focus, focus on the census, but it's not really the census. You could have high census and not get reimbursed, keeping people on forever and ever.
Right, right.
You have a VNA is to try and help people cover and cut them loose so that they're independent. If you keep them for years, it's not gonna help, but your census might be up. So it, it's a lot complicated than census in the reimbursement rates have changed. And, um, you gotta also think about administrative structures and other things. So I, I was gonna add though, you know, there's a, there's also a chance that we are getting improved the bottom line and you might not do anything at that rate, if it continues to improve and get to an acceptable level. Just throwing that out there.
Agreed, and, and we can make it a profitable situation, what's to fix? I mean, you know, there should be some medium somewhere that we should be able to get to. Look how healthcare has changed in the past couple of years alone. I mean, we've seen some major changes.
Yeah, and I think that's the best point is, well, that's a great point, because we always talk census, 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 how many patients we have and that might not, not help, even if we go, you know, to some number of patients. But we may not have the solution yet. I, I thi- I think that's the point that
Right.
That's a, we won't have to go through this again a year from, let's say the, the shining light bright shines upon us in, in March next year and we, oh, we can change the VNA, oh, we didn't change it in the charter, let's go through, we don't want to go through this again. Uh, pretty much so. That's what, that's really the purpose, to, to give us an, an option when and if it comes. And we've been looking and we haven't really found, yeah, right? I mean, I know we have some, we, I know, and I know Erosion
Yeah, you've been
made some changes and you've been working on it. I know that we've, we've been working very hard on it, uh, from the town staff perspective, but.
So this is, again, I mean, I don't want to spend too much time.
No, no, no.
When you dig into the books of Hartford Health and Training Health of New England, take the COVID money out, they've been running multiple billions of dollars in deficits.
Deficits, yeah.
So, you know, it's
Good point.
It's a, not an easy thing to fix, but I, I think there are certain things that we can look at
Yeah.
and improve, and we're going in the right direction with the right leadership.
Yeah, no, I know, we're, we're trying, so anyway.
Uh, and there was one other thing that I had that, and I can yield some time here, Jack, into, to Peter. But, um, for me, for the Board of Finance, I think the Board of Finance is a very different entity other than any other commission or council in town, because they deal with the finances of the town. And I think that to make sure that everything is transparent, that everything seems to, or at least easily be above board, I think it's, for me, having the Board of Finance serve as only the Board of Finance and nothing else. Well, yes, it does make it difficult, because we're all volunteers and it, sometimes they're in, in short supply. To, to keep everything above board and to keep everything a- as clean as possible, I think it's, I appreciate the Board of Finance not being able to serve on any other commission or council, because it's, it's something that we definitely really need to have a very high focus on, and that's really all they should focus on.
Yeah, I mean, that's the point. I mean, I, I, I guess, but when I hear transparency and above board, everything we do is in public. I, 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 I mean, I hear, I hear that a lot. I see it on social media, allow they're not transparent, all this. Everything this council does is recorded. You can go see it on YouTube and watch it to the hearts, your hearts content, God bless you. Um, but, you know, it's all out in the open. Any commission, uh, the senior community commission you were just on, public meetings, open to the public, you name it. Any charter review commission, whatever commission we do is in the public. I, I, that's the part I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but they're not any different than us. And don't forget, the budget can come to us and we could say no. So, so I mean, that's why they're not really any different. Yeah, that's their specialty, I agree with it. But whatever they do on that Board of Finance, whatever we do on this council, whatever they do on any committee we might appoint them to, just like all our, you know, planning and zoning and conservation, all public record, FOI-able, uh, it's, there's nothing not above board that I can see from where I sit anyway. Uh, you know, we, everything's, that's why we sit here twice a month, you know, for hours, because it's all in the public, right? And the public comes and yells at us if they don't like what we do too. On social media and the paper, we get it from all directions.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, that's okay, that's what we're here for.
I, I just, I guess my, my thing is
Yeah.
there's a word out there that always just frustrated me
Yes.
to no end until the last, I would say, ten years or so, which is perception. And, you know, I, you know, obviously people will rankle the, uh, perception, you know, that's not really that important a word, it's kind of nebulous. But I think you're talking about managing a town full of people, 25,000 people, however many people that live in Berlin.
Twenty, don't make it five.
Twenty, hey, listen, let's keep growing.
Yes.
Right, Chris?
Is Tim Greedy listening?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But in any case, the, for me, you know, it is that perception, I think that's important, that the Board of Finance.
Yeah, it is.
You're right that everything is in public.
Right.
That we can view everything, but to be above reproach is important as well.
Agreed, except I think that perception gets created on social media. That's where it comes from, I'm sorry, but the, and, and in newspapers to some extent, nobody seems to read the paper anymore. I know so many people tell me they don't even read the citizen. But social media, the perception on social media with some of the things I heard tonight, just completely, completely off base with what the park, you know, the dog park issue, all of it, just so many misconceptions, maybe, maybe, you know, perception, same thing. So if we, um, we listen to it and all we can do is try and correct it, I think. If we, uh, just say, oh, well, that's the mis, that's the perception, then we're gonna do, no. I mean, we're gonna try and correct that perception. Um, I just don't see why a similar board elected by the people would be treated differently than the rest of us. They're not, they have no more authority and power than really anybody else, in fact, less than the council. They have less authority than the council, it's gotta come to us. Of course, the voters have the ultimate vote on our budget anyway, but as, as in most of the things we do that are going to the voters, but I don't know, I mean, I, you know, whatever, if we could agree to disagree, it's okay. You know, it's the way it is. Anyway, yes, sir.
So, um, well, I'd say the BOE discussion took up many of my recommendations, but in any event, um, section 3.8, so just dovetailing off of the discussion about, uh, you know, Board of Finance.
Yes.
Um, independence, I didn't see that we had any similar provision for town councillor appointment to elected boards.
Correct, we don't.
Yeah.
That's the point.
Well, right, no, but I'm saying that, I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe
We do that too?
in the charter should be there in place as well. I think what's good for the Board of Finance should probably
So you're going the other way?
Uh, yeah, yes, in terms of, well, in terms of town councillor appointments to the Board of Finance or the Board of Education, they're co-equal boards within the contemplation of the charter.
I don't think Board of Ed, Education has a, they're not, uh, there's no restriction on them either going on other committees, right? I don't think the Board of Ed in the charter.
No, well, no member of the council can be a member of any other elected board.
Elected board, right, elected, yeah.
So that is, that is there.
Yeah.
Elected, that
Three dash one.
Oh, three dash one, okay.
But the council
I was looking for some reason in powers and duties.
We went further, right, with the Board of Finance that said they couldn't be on an appointment.
Yes, okay, I see, yeah. I've, then I've just clearly looked over it.
And you, and you know what, Jack? The thing is about that, what, what's frustrating is, let, let's say we, we had that, uh, or, you know, I mean, we, you know, as many of the commissions are dealing with finance, so typically our Board of Finance members are, you know, their, their job is to sort of delve in and, and
I see, yeah, yeah, I understand, I understand the expertise.
So to put one of them on some border commission where we're dealing with financial issues would be a help to us, not a hindrance, but
Yeah, I understand that.
You know, and again, why they're treated differently than everyone else in the charter, that, that makes no sense, but to me.
Um, yeah, so three dash eight, again, um, in terms of collective bargaining agreements, including all Board of Education collective bargaining units must be presented to the council for its review in accordance with applicable state law. Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious as to the, the rationale behind including that. Um, I know there was some discussion when the, um, Police Department collective bargaining agreement was, um, brought to the attention of the town council, and I just wanted to seek clarification on that while we're, we're looking at the specifics of the charter.
Oh, and so, yeah, you're saying, want to leave that in there?
Oh, I've just, I want to, I'm not, I'm, I'm not certain yet, because I'm just trying to think about how this would play out in practice. And so is it, so are collective bargaining agreements presented to the town council? Is it under the advice of Labor? Is, I'm assuming Labor Council would be the entity that would be presenting it to the council? Are we going to receive some sort of advisory opinion in advance? Um, are we acting on the guidance of Labor Council? Like what is exactly our role?
Yeah.
Typically what happens is you would have an executive session where Labor Council would talk to you about, in addition to, um, wage and benefit changes, um, any language changes. Many times in the economic climate in Connecticut since 2008, really, collective bargaining is more about language changes to collective bargaining agreements than it is about wage rates, because the, you know, the number of, uh, districts, especially on the Board of Ed side, as well as on the municipal government side, where there's dramatic differences between wage rates is, you talk about steps, you know, you don't, you don't really talk about, because the there's not a lot of arbitration decisions, but those that come out don't really support dramatic variations in, in wage rates. So you'd have an executive session where, uh, Paula Carabetta, who's Director of HR and Labor Council would brief you on what the changes are and if you had any questions about, you know, did this go to mediation? And, you know, what, what were the sticking points? Or if you had any specific questions at all, they would be an executive session to answer those for you.
I see. All right, um, yeah, just, yeah, just so long as I guess there's some extensive input from Labor Council.
Yep.
Um, that, that's fine, um.
So we, we leave everything
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
3.8.
Um, agree with, with your recommendations on town manager residency requirement, six, one, four pensions.
Yep.
In terms of, I saw that there was language added in for permitting Board of Finance approval, which makes sense considering they're the entity that deals with town finances. Um, I, it was a little unclear when I was reading it in terms of, I understood it as any of those three entities could approve, um, changes to the pension system or may amend or alter the pension system. So if one entity decides to alter the pension system, are you going to need approval from the other two?
So you're looking at six, eleven, four?
Yeah, six, eleven, four, yep.
Are you looking at the sentence that says the manager with council and Board of Finance approval? Yeah, so it has to be all three.
Okay, it does have to be all, all right.
The manager can only do it with council and Board of Finance approval.
I see.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Um, I did just want to address the, I know that there was some discussion in the public hearings about the discretion of the registrars of voters, um, to reduce the polling locations for budget referendums. I, I did spend quite a bit of time with this provision and I do, I do feel pretty comfortable with it in the way that it's written, that it requires unanimous consent from both registrars of voters. In the way that it's written, that it requires unanimous consent from both registrars of voters. I think that that provides adequate checks and balances and assurances. That if one of the registrars of voters, because I think that. You know, obviously they're the ones that are dealing with the the polling locations on a on a daily basis, on an election to election basis. I feel, I feel comfortable with that language that requires both of them to consent, so. I just wanted to address that because I know that that was brought up in the public hearing. Beyond that, I mean, I guess, you know, in light of the the suggestions to the Board of Education. I'm I'm comfortable in addition to to what Counselor Yurinaga had mentioned, so.
Mr. Peter, Mr. Peter.
Hello.
We haven't forgotten you, young man.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for waking, no, I mean.
Getting late, we know.
Yeah, I'm, I agree with my counselor, my grandson, Jack. I think our our fears have been allied and allayed and. I I tend to to agree to send these back with the changes that you've suggested.
Now, but Jack, you you had a couple others, right? You were throwing in there, right? Were they, I guess they're in six.
Wait, which ones?
What was the one you just, the last one you just talked about?
With the registrar voters?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm 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 fine with that. Remain as is.
Again, again, because I'm worried we're headed down the muddy road again with too many.
No, I know, yeah, no, I think I'm I'm comfortable with that as written, so.
Yeah, that's that's the fear, Roche, I know you put a lot of work on it some days, I'm sorry, but I just think it's too much. I I just know what happened last time and it'll be the same. I believe. So now, so we're all, we're all good, everybody good? Anything else?
Should we just do a rehash?
Yes.
Yes. Can we just play the tape? If I could rehash it all again.
Can I, can I, can I?
So we get the V and A number, let's say, let's just, I'm just gonna suggest questions, I don't know what they can figure out, but so one question would be the V and A. Separate question, right, and pretty much leave the language as is, correct? No changes with the V and A?
As drafted.
Correct. The town manager, question number two, separate question, as drafted. Okay, no changes, right? The BOE.
As revised tonight.
As revised tonight with three words added in to. I guess after the word appear in two point eight shall appear on the ballot.
So all of the edits by the CRC on the BOE are rejected. And in lieu of that, you want to change, you want to add on the ballot in two dash eight when referencing.
Yes.
Partly, okay.
That's not, let's say question three or however, however they come through, and then four. Is what, we have the five thousand to twenty five thousand? I'm I'm sorry, I don't know why I keep saying five, ten to twenty five, it's getting a little late anyway. Ten to twenty five and.
Only on two.
Yeah, we're not, we're only a number two. And. The fire marshal. Six nine, dash nine, dash ten with the fire department, I think we left the language the same, right? We left it the same.
Well, you want, I thought you wanted on six dash nine to make that change.
Oh, yeah, okay, right. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna make that, right, correct.
Or by ordinance, correct?
Right.
Or otherwise provided.
Yes.
And what about four dash four dash one?
Well, that would be.
Want to make that change?
Yes, I, yeah. That's the Board of Finance that they're treated like everyone else as far as.
And what about three eight J?
Yeah, what's that one?
That was the one that Jack just talked about.
Uh, which one?
Collective Barney agreements.
Oh. Yeah, we should, what do you think? We probably should do that one.
Only difference is adding the Board of Fed, right? Because they already bring.
The rest of them, so we're adding in the Board of Ed.
We bring to the.
That's what I think, right? The others, we we.
Well, I mean, that that's the practice.
Yes.
But it's not in the Charter, so if you're okay with it not being in the Charter.
No. Well. I I think it should be in the Charter, but maybe that's section. So there'll be question four, let's say, or however they. Work on the questions, that would be four, there'd be four sections to question four, that would be the fourth.
And then I hate to do this to you, but what about six, eleven, four?
Don't do that, Jeff.
What about six, eleven, four? I mean, six, eleven, four is formalizing the requirement that the ARC be. Included in the in the budget.
Oh, to, right, mandatory funding.
And that's an auditor, that's a, that's an auditor recommendation.
This is the last.
For the finance and the town council include in the annual actuarially determined contributions calculated by qualified independent actuary engaged by the town. In the annual general fund budget. That should not be controversial. It's what's being done now, but the auditor recommends it be formalized by being included in the Charter.
Just trying to avoid a situation where you don't fund it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think there should be protections in place, especially. You know, considering the discussions about, so we're did pension liabilities that we had this past budget.
We keep just growing the list.
It's only nine, it's under ten. Listen, I got carpal tunnel from typing all this stuff.
So. So you hate to see it just gone away, not that it will, we don't know what the Board of or the Chair Commission do, so, okay, so that would be number. Five, right? Well, if I I'm just talking parts of four. If we did parts of four.
There'll be six parts to four.
Four, six parts to four. Oh, boy, here we see how we are. Whatever, yeah, fine, well, listen, it's a recommendation. If we all think that's important, I do too, I just, again, don't want to keep adding stuff, but. It will go back to the commission and they can do what they want to do with it.
Yep.
You better take care, we're just kidding.
I really like to have something that the voters can pass. That's anything that anyone on the council is really objecting to any of these ideas, is there a problem with any of these?
Or like any, we think.
The ones we just discussed.
The ones we just discussed.
Yeah.
Are they?
Are we all?
Are we all agreeable?
Put these one, two, three, four questions, part and and the sixth part or number four, or however we do it. Those are just the things we just went over, right?
Yeah, I'd I'd rather have this discussion now and get clear.
Yeah.
Instructions before I read about it in a Herald and they lie again.
I mean, if you if you're looking for, if you're looking for low hanging fruit, are you unsolicited opinion from your town attorney? You don't have to move the fire marshal out of the fire department. Everybody knows the fire marshal's not in the fire department. So it's not like we have all this confusion where gee, the fire marshal shows up, is riding around a truck all day. You know what I'm saying? So if you're looking at, if you're looking at. Stream mile a little bit, that's that's one where operationally, it's not what affecting anything.
Right. Well, I would just let those six parts be and let's just send it forward to them and if we're all, if we all agree. Those are the ones we think are the most important.
So the language into, sorry, I'm sorry, I just want to be absolutely clear, so the language.
They've got another bite at the apple, go to Charter Review Commission, tell them that's not what we said, right? We could always tell them at their public hearing.
The three words that are, what, shall appear on the ballot?
Shall.
Not appear.
Not appear. And that, and that goes where? I'm sorry.
If you go to your.
No, well, well, no, it says, if if we just, well, I mean, we could.
You go to your red line draft on page fourteen.
Yep.
You see the original text is all crossed out.
Yep.
So if you go about seven eighths of the way down. There's a sentence that says no party designation shall appear, you see that?
In the middle of a paragraph.
That's towards the, towards the bottom.
Not the one I have, but.
That's true, it depends on how.
In red?
All in red, yep, it's all crossed out.
Okay, yep, yep.
So after the word appear. It'll say on the ballot.
Okay.
So the full sentence will be no party designation shall appear on the ballot in connection with the names of candidates for set board.
Okay.
So all it does is clarify what the existing procedure is, which is there's no party designations on the ballot. Because the candidates are not nominated by the parties.
Got it.
Alright. We good, we think?
I'm good.
All on the same page?
Good.
Peter, didn't forget you again, you there?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so. Want to take a vote? Or no, or just record, so let's take, so take a vote on. On the recommendations we just went through, right, one, one through four with six parts to four. I'm not gonna read, I'm not gonna read them again, so, but someone else can if they want to, but I think we, I think we're, we're clear, right? We're clear on what they are?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Oh, I'm sorry, second?
So moved.
Second? Okay.
Second.
Second. All those.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, one abstention. Right?
Very good.
Yeah, yeah. It's all in favor? Aye. Suppose one abstention.
Move that over.
Okay, whew, what time is it? Oh, Lord.
Want to move to agenda item number three?
Oh, do we have to? Yes, okay.
Already?
Already, yeah. Let's talk some more.
So. This particular one is trying to mitigate cyber risk and proactive measures that we are taking. Current systems that are in place was good for few years, many years ago. But you have seen, you know, in other towns and a lot of other organizations who have the. Instances where there have been some compromises. And Ryan has been working to try and upgrade our systems and also insurance companies are. Being away from. Providing insurance unless you have these mitigating strategies, so that's the purchase of the. CrowdStrike Falcon Complete. I would have, I'm coming up and just give a quick overview into last. What do you want the council to do?
Evening.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Well, you picked the wrong meeting to get on the agenda, that's.
Before this.
Oh, guess it's a timing, right?
Yes, it's everything.
Okay, well, as Seroch mentioned, our cyber insurance company has added several prerequisites for client approval, one of them being endpoint detection and response. Or EDR, have an EDR solution. We currently only have an antivirus program which covers the town hall in endpoints, not the library or the police department. And the software doesn't meet the insurance company's requirements and will not prevent ransomware or other cyber threats. So after several months of research and testing, CrowdStrike Falcon Complete was determined to be the best product for our needs. I've also checked with other agencies, one of them being the state of Connecticut, I spoke to Jeff Brown. Who is the Chief Information Security Officer for the state of Connecticut. And we also had a meeting with the Director of Information Technologies from Rocky Hill, and they both highly recommend Falcon Complete. Special pricing was obtained from Omada Technologies through CrowdStrike. And this would be funded from the information technologies computer support line. As well as the business continuity hardware and software virtualization account.
Questions? Questions? Ah, yeah, I think it's all good stuff.
This is, other than employee training, I think this is probably the biggest thing we can do to protect ourselves against ransom.
When you spoke with the other towns about this, this was basically the best. This is the best software to try and at least minimize this, right? We can't, we're not really immune to it, obviously.
Correct, and the good thing with this Falcon Complete product is that it's monitored by cybersecurity professionals twenty four sevens. They look for suspicious processes in our network. Twenty four seven, you know, we're, you know, people would have long gone home and not have noticed any. Irregularities in the network until the next day or far too late.
Right.
So they can take action to mitigate that.
That's great.
That's great.
Okay, there's no, were there questions? Go ahead and take a motion on this, two motions, I guess, man.
First one, I moved to waive the bidding process and to approve the purchase of the CrowdStrike Falcon Complete Service from. Omada Technologies of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. On an ongoing basis with funding from the IT computer support account for an amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars and forty three cents. Since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Posed, so moved.
Thank you.
Motion to, I think there's another.
Second motion, hold on, I moved to approve the supplementation of funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. For CrowdStrike Falcon Complete from business continuity, hardware and software virtualization account for an amount of seven thousand dollars.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Thank you, Brian, stay there, next one is yours to agenda item number four. That should do with the purchase of exchange online for police department email system. Run out and so do you.
Okay, thank you, Roche. Another requirement of the insurance companies, which we've been able to meet for the town systems and also the library. Is multi-factor authentication for email. I know everybody loves that. Currently, the police department, they have unpremise exchange and that is not capable of supporting. Multi-factor authentication, so we did some research and it appears that. Exchange online will be the best product because it works with in-house Outlook, Webmail and mobile devices. Satisfies that MFA requirement. Novus Insight has been the RFP selected vendor through CROG. And we currently use them for our town in library exchange online systems. The Microsoft pricing is the same, no matter what vendor you buy it through. So this would allow another benefit of this, it would allow larger email attachment sizes and give additional storage to the officers at the P D as well. The funding for this would come from the Police Department Computer Support Account. Any questions?
Questions, Brian? Hearing none, go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I moved to utilize the capital regional government's request for also to approve the purchase of the exchange online three sixty five. From Novus Insight for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand and thirty four dollars.
You second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Those in favor? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Good night. Then item number five, we discussed this last time about the request from the American Legion. Mike, I appreciate you're still awake there.
Yes, I am.
To join us, I'll let you take this, I was gonna.
Sure, yeah, this is pretty straightforward. The American Legion Post sixty eight, which is at the corner of Porters Pass and Misserio Drive. Pro start apartment for some help with drainage, they were getting some flooding from there, the property behind them is sort of, it's uphill. And the driveway and the roof runoff comes down and it goes actually down a slope and some of it's been getting into their building. So I explained to them we'd have to come to the Town Council, we took a look at it, one approach was to put a curb on the driveway, but. Their part, the people who were using that property are parking there, they would end up, it would have basically been destroyed after a couple of months, so. Jim Horrible and Steve Karp, the Highway Super, met with some of their members and came up with a solution to regrade. And basically install a square behind the building to divert flow around the building, and I think, we think that will help. It's probably going to be two guys, two days with just an excavator out there, no outside contractors, and that's basically. Their their request and you'll see the letter that was from their post commander. Vincent Triglia basically put this request in writing and we're here before you now to. Basically request your permission to do this.
Hey, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Any questions for Mike? I know, I know we talked about this last time, yeah, so. Okay, I think it's a good thing we're gonna try and fix that for them and. That's good. Go ahead and take a motion on this.
Mr. May, I moved to approve the use of town forces and equipment to assist the American Legion Post sixty eight in the regrading of a portion of their property. Located at one fifty four Porters Pass.
Take a second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Posed, alright, so moved.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Then item number six, this is a replacement of damaged police cruiser that was in an accident which was totaled. Then item number six, uh, this is uh the placement of damaged police cruiser that was in an accident which was totaled. And uh, Sir Simons, he was uh able to locate another one very quickly and uh this uh. Which is to try and uh. Get another cruiser back. Jim, over to you.
Good evening, how is everybody?
Hello, Jim.
Hey, we're doing great, Jim. How are you?
That's my bedtime.
Yes.
Get in line.
We're slowly approaching all of ours, I think, or whenever it might be.
So unfortunately, we had an accident involving a police car and a police car got totaled. And this is to replace that police car with a new car and then outfit it and letter it and do all that good stuff to it.
That's great. Hey, so just. The officer, she's doing okay, right?
I understand, yes.
Yeah, that's what I understand. Okay, that's, that's the main thing. Car is the car, you know, but. And I guess from what I saw of a picture of that vehicle, that car did heck of a job in protecting that officer. Yeah, for that, right? Unbelievable. That it's unbelievable that she's fine. I mean, I, that's, that's great. I mean, it's wonderful, so. Okay, so yeah, we, we turned the story. So any questions for Jim? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and, how'd you find a car so rapidly? I'm looking for a new car. Can you find me one too?
Sometimes you just step in it, you know?
Uh, that's what happens. Good.
Made the right phone call and that's how it happened.
Good for us, good for us, good for you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay.
Two motions.
First one, I moved to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two Ford Police Interceptor from MHQ of Middletown, Connecticut. Utilizing the state of Connecticut DAS Services Contract one-two PSX zero-one-nine-four. For an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? So moved.
Second one, I moved to approve the purchase of replacement equipment and the labor to outfit a new police vehicle from MHQ of Middletown, Connecticut. Utilizing the state of Connecticut DAS Services Contract twenty-one PSX zero-zero-eight-three for five thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thinking second on that?
Okay.
Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Then item number seven, time of the year to purchase tires. Simon's, turn it over to you, in the interest of time.
This is, this is just our yearly uh awarding or uh awarding the contracts to purchase tires from different vendors. Use utilizing some state of Connecticut DAS contracts using some um purchasing powers and things like that. But they're coming from local vendors. The contracts are all held by the manufacturer, whether it be Goodyear, Firestone, Michelin. And uh, we're utilizing their pricing to get the best deal for the town.
Alright, thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Okay, moved to approve the purchase of Goodyear and Bridgestone tires and related components using the. Using the state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services Contract eighteen PSX zero-zero-zero-twenty-two. From Connecticut Tire, Sullivan Tire, DePetro Tire. And also to waive the town's purchasing requirements and purchase Michelin and off-brand tires utilizing government pricing from the same three vendors. As this is in the town's best interest, the total amount of the expected tire transactions for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is not to exceed. Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Alright, second on that?
Okay.
Okay, any other uh questions? Hearing none, take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you. Then item number eight is a purchase of a twenty-three Ford van for the facilities department. Jim, over to you.
Um, so last year you gave us some money to purchase a couple of vehicles. Pricing did become available along with the order bank opened up to purchase a Ford Transit Van for building facilities. Uh, department. And we went and got the, the correct pricing and the correct spikes for what we need. And we're here to get it approved so we can place the order.
Okay. Alright, yeah, talked about this before. Um, take a motion on this.
Okay, moved to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty-three Ford Transit Van from Taska Ford in Berlin, Connecticut. Utilizing the state of Connecticut DAS Services Contract nineteen PSX zero-one. Two-one for the amount not to exceed forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars.
A second on that?
Second.
Any other, any questions for Jim on this? Hearing none, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Alright, so moved.
Good, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Next two.
Jim.
And items uh to do with the purchase of chemicals for the golf course. And uh, the first one is the early order chemical program. We do this every year.
Yes.
Now we're here to give you a quick overview.
As Roche just mentioned, this is um. New purchase chemicals through the early order program offered through the. The uh manufacturers that I've identified here. Uh, we're looking to spend or we spent. Total of ninety-three thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars. And with the rebates that we get back from the um manufacturers. We're looking at a rebate, a totally rebate of thirteen thousand four forty-four. So our final cost for the chemicals would be eighty thousand three twenty-nine. We do this annually. Uh, we do, or I do, look at other generics. Uh, compared to the brand name chemicals and always comparing to see what in uh. Which is the most cost effective for us, but looking at the chemical itself. And knowing how it performs and then the warranties that we get through the name brand manufacturer. So. Uh, when you look at the price comparison of a generic to the name brand. And you take advantage of the early order program, in most cases, it's the same price or less than if we were to go out and just buy generic. So uh, again, we're looking to have this approved uh in an amount not to exceed. Ninety-three seven seventy-three.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, okay, any questions for Jerry? If not, we have seen this before and I'm sure we'll see it again. Um, go ahead and take a motion on this.
And moved to waive the bidding procedure and purchase chemicals from Harrell's in the amount not to exceed ninety-three thousand. Seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and four cents, as this is in the best interest of the town of Berlin. Chemical purchases are through the early orders program on BASF, Syngenta, Bayer, C Pro, Corteva. And New Farm Chemical Companies.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Right, thank you. Next agenda also is for chemical purchase from uh Infield Solutions.
Again, we've reached the ten thousand dollar spending threshold with Windfield and due to the uh. Recent drought, high heat humidity, uh, having to purchase more uh chemicals in, in the, in the. Future to uh offset the disease pressure I expect in an upcoming month. So therefore, we're looking for a bid waiver not to exceed seventeen thousand. Windfield Solutions, again, as we've reached the ten thousand dollar spending threshold.
Okay. Thanks. Um, any questions? Uh, okay, we'll take a motion.
Okay, moved away the town's bidding procedure to approve the purchase of additional chemicals from Windfield Solutions. An amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second on that?
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Right, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Harry, good night. Hi, Jerry.
Then item number eleven. Um, Doug's online. This has to do with uh pool of sustainable engineering solutions of Berlin, Connecticut. To utilize the Berlin High School Mechanical Room, the video backdrop and uh. Doug will give you a quick uh summary of this agenda item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Counselor. Sorry this evening.
Hi, Doug.
Yes, this is one of our local businesses, uh firms that's done quite a bit of work for the town and the Board of Education. Most recently with the return to school commissioning. Uh, they just asked permission to utilize the boiler room. As a backdrop for the promotional video they will be shooting. Um, not gonna mention the school or anything, but just, it's a close proximity to their office. They're familiar with the space and it suits the need of. Uh, what they're trying to accomplish with their video. So they're asking permission to use the building for up to four hours. And in lieu of a fee, they would uh donate their services back to additional commissioning work at the school or a building we see fit.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, sounds good. Any questions for Doug?
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Will we have to provide any paid staff, any janitors or anybody from our forces beyond regular hours?
Oh, no, this would be during, during normal working hours, no overtime costs incurred. Um, they do have their current with their insurance, so it's basically just to let them into the building. Um, and then they will notify us when they're done and we will lock up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, no other questions? We're gonna take a motion on this.
Okay, I moved to approve a donation from Sustainable Energy Engineering Solutions of LLC in Berlin, Connecticut. In the amount of four hours for HVAC commissioning services in lieu of building use of the Berlin High School Mechanical Room. For a retro commissioning video backdrop.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, a lot on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved.
Thank you, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Then item number twelve is the uh. Twenty twenty-two transit, we're into development grant. Uh, you probably recall, last time we came to you. And uh discussed the uh TOD uh grant that was available. Fortunately, you know, the grant uh we were notified July first, application started on September first. She leaves sixty days and for us it's thirty days because we don't meet after today.
Oh, yeah.
So um, they're also um. It's since it's related to TOD, it's a very close radius and we decided at that point we want to uh. Use the lead school as a possibility. Um, depending on the type of grant and the request, it could be anywhere from. Zero to two million, but I don't know whether we'll get two million, probably not. But the, normally I would have done this in two branches because this is the first time we are. Coming and talking to you about this and as a town, we haven't had discussions about what can we do with the lead school. But this is not to decide what they're gonna do with the lead school, but to um, the question is to hire the architect. They have come at a higher price, but today or five years from today, most of these grants have been there shovel ready. And we want to apply for a grant, we need to know what is it that we're asking. We don't know whether it's structurally sound. Whether it's possible that um, you know, we might have to spend money for water, sewer, electricity, HVAC, all of that. And and um, and what other needs you may have. So you can't even apply for a grant if you don't know uh what you're asking for. So um, um, I'll turn it over to Jim and Doug. Doug, do you wanna? Do you want to, if you wanna say anything about the uh. The frier, what they're gonna give us? Maybe Doug, you can give a quick update and maybe Jim, you can talk about the grant itself application. What do you, Doug?
Sure, this um, um, this would be more, we feel as a, a facilities condition assessment. Uh, they'll do a study. Into the existing conditions, the structure, the integrity of the building, look at all the code compliance issues, what we can possibly utilize the space for. How many s- uh, staff members we can occupy the building with, what kind of programs we could use out of there. A real thorough code assessment. And hopefully determine what would be the best use of the building if we do receive some grant funding. Just as a follow-up, this building has been um referenced in capital for quite a few years. There is some funding. For a little bit of painting and restoration, not quite enough to do a full exterior um renovation that we've. Trying to do and certainly uh environmental, code issues, interior build out. It'd be hard to really use the building for anything other than a dry storage building which it's currently used for. So it's a great historic piece of the town. An old school, a lot of history. It's used by organizations now. We think it's a great potential. To, to use it for this grant project and in the close proximity of town hall, downtown, all the sidewalks. Could be a great project if it moves forward.
Okay. Any questions for Doug?
And we're, we're okay. I mean, we're pretty sure that we're gonna be able to get all that assessment done within the time limit that, that we need to get it done.
I've reached out to. You are, you firm is the only group that could do in such a short time. Um, yeah, I think I mentioned this offline. I, I don't wanna talk about real users because people get. You know, upset about why they were not included. But for example, uh, the police station. Renovation, when that happens, the food pantry and everything needs to go out. We'll be looking for some storage. You might not think it's a good place, but we're gonna have that conversation. But at least we'll know whether this bu- building could be occupied um. By people or can it be used for storage? Uh, if you don't know that, we can do anything about it, but it's a town building. Uh, I, I know the garden club is using that and the historic. You know, district wants to do things with it, but you can have a diligent conversation if you at least know. This is a building that can be um saved or how much would it need?
What's the year?
You know, Doug, is it early part of the twentieth century, the, when this was built?
I believe so. I, I apologize, but we do have some correspondence from the historical society that referenced the history and the timeline of the building.
Okay, oh, alright. Interesting, go ahead. We also have a question? No, we're good?
I'm good.
Yes, yes.
I think it's great if we could somehow utilize something that has history. And to keep, what, whether it's for whatever the purpose ends up being, the fact that we're looking at, you know. You know, taking care of it and bringing it forward.
I have a picture on my phone. There's a sign. It says eighteen fifty.
Okay, eighteen fifty, okay, wow, wow, really historic. That's pretty cool. And it's in such a good location too. It really is. Certainly needs a lot of work inside. The last time I've been in there, probably a year ago. A lot of work, but it's okay, you know, we get a grant.
That was, I think it's.
Yeah.
Liked you that we might be able to allocate anything to our capital.
Yeah, right, yeah.
If we can get.
Yeah, yeah.
That's something to fix it, that would be great.
Yeah. Great. Um, okay, uh, no more questions? We'll take a motion.
Okay, moved to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Friar Associates. An architect that is on the town's on-call bid list to prepare studies, concept, conceptual plans and cost estimates related to the. Stabilization and reuse of the ledge school. And to increase the authoris- authorized funding for this project to seventeen thousand dollars. To be paid from the townwide professional services account.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. There's no other questions? We'll go ahead and uh vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Alright, motion carries.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number thirteen is uh authorization for the town manager to subordinate the town's facade program mortgage with respect to eight forty-eight Farmington Avenue. Done this a few times when they go out for a mortgage. Um, in this case, the uh eight forty-eight Farmington Avenue at the LLC, which is Newport. And financing through Thomaston Savings Bank and uh we do have to give them the um. Subordination that, to the bank.
Yeah, we've done it before. Um, if there's no questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, moved to authorize the town manager to execute subordination agreements with respect to the town's mortgage. Related to the facade program grant that is recorded at volume seven seventy-three, page two twenty-six of the Berlin Land Records. Subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second on that?
Second.
You, there are no questions? We'll go ahead and uh vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So moved.
Right, thank you. Do you have anything, Counselor Russell?
Uh, I lost everything um, except for sound, so I wanna be recorded in favor of that last motion. I got everything back now.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number fourteen is authorization for the town manager to submit a small town economic assistance program grant. Application for the Steel Boulevard Park and section eight twenty-four review. Jim, you're there.
Yes. So the uh, in June, the council authorized hiring of Yentik um rever consultants to do. Additional plans for the uh Steel Boulevard Park. That, that would be on the small parcel that's. That's northeast side of the boulevard that the town retains ownership of. This would be an effort to complete the project. And um, it, we, you referred it to planning zoning for a twenty-four review. Planning and zoning has given us a unanimous favorable recommendation on the eight twenty-four. And then with respect to the uh. And then with respect to the um the steep grant, the application, they're recommending a um twenty percent match. It's not required, but um you know, in order to position ourselves best for to get them to get the grant, we're proposing that we authorize a hundred thousand dollar match from the Farmington Avenue non-grant account. And um as in in in-house, as we started to discuss the match and we have about hundred fifty, hundred sixty thousand in the Farmington Avenue um development non-grant account left at this point. And we talked about other potential uses and of course, we're shortly, we're actually tomorrow going to uh issue the bid for the engineer control for fifty-five Steel Boulevard and we're talking about what if we need additional funds for that? And um so we just want to alert you to this. We think it, you know, again, at this point, uh, hopefully that that other project will be on budget. We've had conversations with Department of Economic Community Development, where we would be eligible for a a supplemental brownfield grant for that project if it's necessary. And also, you know, we'll have the bids in on that project before we get any notification on this grant, so we'll have a chance if there is is an issue to come back to you and decide whether we want to accept this grant or not on these conditions. So um, all that being said, we're recommending that we authorize the application and uh and the match and and accept and authorize the eight twenty-four report. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, any questions? Not? Uh, we'll go and take a motion.
Okay, move to accept the section eight twenty-four report from the Planning and Zoning Commission and to authorize the town manager to submit a small town economic assistant grant, a program grant application for the Steel Boulevard Park project and to authorize a hundred thousand dollar match in the Farmington Avenue Development Non-Grant Account.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions? Have we none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Alright, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Item number fifteen is authorization for the town manager to apply for a supporting arts grant. Now, our director is here to talk about the grant.
Evening. Um, yes, so um I just recently found out about the uh arts and culture grants that they have of Department of Economic Community Development. A couple pieces we needed to take care of. One was to designate a certain department as the arts and culture coordinator. The second was to create an ad hoc committee to assist of which I currently have uh three artists, one um business owner and um another resident of the town. Um, and really what is going to happen is um if we're awarded a grant, I'm essentially will be taking some of the motion money we currently have within budget. Using that with the five thousand to essentially uh really do arts type events. A couple of things in mind I had was one to look at possible public art, uh murals per se, but figuring out where we can do that. Um, additionally, would be trying to get the arts kind of elevated. Um, I think there's a number of artists in town who don't necessarily make their living through the arts, but there are a lot of creative people. A couple of things in mind, one would be a chalk art day in the fall to get families and kids out on Farmington Avenue, design all the sidewalks. Pretty low cost. The high school did a great job of that in the spring. I'll have some amazing artists there. The second would be to bring hopefully the farmers and what will be a farmers and crafters market back to Farmington Avenue in springtime. Well, the activity, I think that is good stuff. Um, we also have a couple of ideas, but right now essentially looking to apply for the grant. Um, and really what it is, is essentially for operating expenses. So it really is very open-ended normally, an arts organization uh or a actual studio or town art department would apply for it, but this seems to be the best fit under economic development and I'm talking to people, I think there's an opportunity here for us to get some money and um better do some great stuff with the arts and try to get more creative energy to what we're already doing in Berlin.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, I think that's a wonderful idea, Chris, and I'd be more than happy to supply with a letter of support if you need that for that grant and um I also serve on that caucus in Hartford and it's really wonderful. Um, and they're very giving um lots of money there right now, so I think it's a great opportunity for the town to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Good. Okay, any other questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris. Next time uh you gotta buy lunch maybe for Roche, so you're not so late on the agenda. Like you messed up a little bit, but maybe you'll learn that as you go along, you know?
It's it's actually okay because I'm actually able to catch up on a couple of things and
Took a couple of naps, come back. It's alright, good for you. Alright, we'll take a motion on this.
You want to do it now or you want to wait? I'm just kidding.
Let's wait a while.
To designate the economic
Deputy Mayor.
Development Department as the coordinator of the Arts and Culture Programming and authorize the town manager to apply for a two thousand twenty-two Department of Economic and Community Development Supporting Arts Grant Program.
Take a second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Alright, so moved.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Item number sixteen.
To this. Oh my, oh my lord, what in the world?
Yes, this one uh we've talked about this before. It's about uh surplus, surplus funds and want to do with it and I see Kevin's available to give us. You, Kevin.
So what what have we here, Mr. Kevin?
Well, good morning, everybody.
Just about, just about there.
So we'll quickly go through these thirteen requests. Um as part of the FY twenty-three budget process, the Board of Finance removed all of the capital requests and asked that we come back at the end of fiscal year twenty-two if there are surplus dollars available to fund items. As we got near the end of fiscal year twenty-two, a cross-functional team including uh representatives from the major capital uh utilizers, including the Board of Ed, as well as facilities, grounds, et cetera. Um, got together and prioritized items that had been requested. There wasn't anticipated to be enough money to fund everything that had been requested on the FY twenty-three capital plan. Um, so we prioritized the highest items. What you're looking at on the agenda item are the items that remain as the highest items, as well as a couple that have been added since that meeting. Um, two of those items at the beginning were already addressed and funded a couple of weeks ago. The school vans and the Hubbard Playground improvements, those were necessary due to critical timing matters. Um, what coming back now is asking to use funding for server replacements at both Town Hall and server work at the P D. Fire alarm upgrades for both Willard and Grisbald. That will finish off the school fire alarm upgrades that started with VHS renovation and have worked through the other schools. Um, money to replace the thirty-two-year-old original carpeting at the library. Money to fund the twenty percent share of the town to purchase another senior van. This has been a successful program in the past where the town only has to fund twenty percent of the cost and DOT funds the other eighty percent. Some equipment, it's been a few years since new equipment has been purchased at Timberland. Over the last two years, Timberland has generated uh six-figure surpluses. And this year, we'd like to use that money to purchase a used pickup truck, a small used Kubota tractor that's going to help run the course more efficiently and utilize equipment better and also begin funding the process of replacing the seven on-course bridges for public safety. Um, also continuing the annual replacement of police vehicles. And then finally, the the last two, uh as as we're all aware, the cost of everything, including vehicles, has gone up substantially. The town has traditionally had a small vehicle reserve fund in the capital non-recurring uh fund and that is down to about three thousand dollars. So we would like to put thirty-five thousand dollars in there and that fund allows us to continue purchasing so that if we anticipate, for example, a vehicle to cost forty thousand dollars and the vehicle comes back at forty-three thousand dollars. It's a few thousand dollars that allow us to continue to move forward and make important purchases. And then lastly, the council asked the Board of Finance to review and come up with funding alternatives to help the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department um repave the parking lot. And after reviewing it for the last two meetings, what the Board of Finance is asking is to uh direct eighty thousand dollars of the surplus to help fund that project. That is the anticipated cost of the recommended renovations from Galasso, who is the contractor with the town. The agreement from Chief Pager from the department was that any overages, if it were to go beyond the quoted amount that the Kensington Fire Department would pick up that element. So it's a it's a partnership to a certain extent, especially if if the cost goes over. All total, this is about one point one million dollars, so it is a substantial investment. Uh, but the idea was to target key areas of public safety, areas of of heavy utilization, for example, the library. Um, and to address some other areas that had been requested, like the Kensington Parking Lot. Um, I know that there are department heads available as well if you have specific questions on any of the projects.
So thank you, Kevin. Um, so the the surplus, so we don't know what the exact surplus is yet, right? We're projecting here at three point four million. Is that true?
Yes, we're we're just about at the end. We've been, we're, this is the the last piece. If uh once you've made the decision and the Board of Finance or anything that does move forward makes a decision uh on the second of August, that would be the point where we would close out the remaining journal entries and look to turn over the records to the auditors to complete their audit.
Okay, and and these, all these parts of sixteen here, everything you mentioned, we, that totals one point one million.
The highlighted items do, yes.
That the the ones that are on our um agenda here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so no, I just I just am asking because I don't want us later to say, oh, well, the surplus is a half a million dollars and oops. I mean, it looks good that it's, yeah.
Yes, it's even below what the minimum would be.
Yeah.
The expected surplus, which is really encouraging, too.
Yeah, assuming that's what it comes out to be. I hope so. Um, so, alright. Um, and these were all priority items, as you explained, right?
Correct.
Yeah. That the Board of Finance said put a priority on as well, right? Or we'll see when they get it. Do we know?
We um we walked through that list last meeting and all agreed that that made sense.
Okay.
You know, this is one point one million, the surplus would be higher. The intent when the audit is complete would be to uh return and consider some other items potentially used. Uh, the first thing on the list would be the fourth of the four fire vehicle replacements. So that would actually, if approved by both the council and the Board of Finance, would allow completing the strategic replacement of four vehicles bought in the week of September eleventh, so twenty-year-old fire vehicles. Uh, one was received in March, two more are on order. And uh the intent would be if if the funding is available, the surplus to complete that process. Um, over the last few years, there's been a significant focus of using the surplus for critical infrastructure and for public safety matters, and that would continue the effort.
Okay, alright, that's that's good. Okay, folks, questions?
I have a a couple. Um, the Kevin, could you shed any light on the the note here about the memorial pool repairs and defer pending P and R guidance? What was that guidance that you were, are you waiting for guidance from Parks and Rec?
Yes, um, there's the pool, the East Berlin Pool requires some um fair amount of work. Neighborhood two hundred thousand dollars of repair work. And so uh staff who work closely with that, as well as other Parks and Rec Commission uh are looking more broadly at what is the total cost in addition to the building, in addition to other work around the pool that may be required and asking the question, is that the best use of town resources? Additionally, a citizen did approach Parks and Rec asking that the town consider converting some of the Hubbard tennis courts to pickleball courts. Surrounding towns have the pickleball courts and it's a a popular and increasingly popular sport. And so when this came up at the Park and Rec Commission meeting, the commission asked to take a look at the entire Parks and Rec capital list and then come back. So rather than asking you to fund something that would then ultimately either not be done or come back and re-prioritize later, we paused on that amount and and said we'll revisit it when Parks and Rec and the liaison staff have determined their priorities.
Thank you for that. And uh then the the second question I have, are we assuming that the parking lot cost will be more than greater than eighty thousand dollars? Because it it sounds like we're we're kind of thinking it's going to be more than eighty K.
Um, I I I don't know that I would say we're assuming, but I would say in 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 light of what we've experienced in the recent past. Um, I, the phrase I would probably say is everything seems to cost more than we expect these days. So that is the risk. I I don't know that we would expect it to be substantially higher. Um, but potentially higher. We did, the Board of Finance did look at the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department's Form nine ninety, the IRS filing that it not-for-profit has to file, which gives not only income but also an asset picture. They do have assets, a large percentage of which is the actual building. Uh, but there are other assets available, so there are means to do this, which is where the Board of Finance was trying to strike a balance between asking the taxpayers um being mindful of the fact that the fire station, the building and the property is not town-owned property, but that they do provide a critical town service and store critical town uh public safety equipment to try to strike that balance of funding the projected amount.
So this amount basically is just after you guys had gone over the uh their financials that this is the best the the best case scenario, I guess you come, you you came to.
I mean, the board basically said we would like, we'll fund the quote from Galasso and then uh ask Chief Pager if they the Kensington Fire Department would be willing to fund an overage and he agreed in the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Seems pretty fair. Right, yeah? Yeah, that's good. Any other questions, folks, or? Kevin? If not, thank you for all this info, so I guess we'll start making some motions here.
I've already spread spread read all these, didn't you?
No, Brendan, you don't have to.
No, we group them.
What what do we need to do? So we just do a uh
One, two.
My my suggestion is that you make a motion to approve the transfers in the amounts stated in the agenda from the accounts and to the accounts stated in the agenda.
Uh, wonderful.
What?
Brendan, you get all that? Just make sure you got all that.
In the, I'm sorry, in the minutes we'll include all this.
Yes, of course, yeah, yeah. Yeah, right, no, it's on, it's it's on the record, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the thirteen um agenda items here under this um in the transfers or or approve the thirteen transfers in the amount stated from the accounts mentioned to the accounts mentioned.
Okay. Thank you. A second on that?
Second.
Excellent. Uh, a- any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Alright, so uh so moved.
Thank you.
We know we hire Corporation Council.
Thanks for staying.
And Afrio for a reason. Anywhere we could shorten up the meetings, it's a great thing.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, agenda.
Nice, Ken.
Them number seventeen. As we know, with all this fun and excitement, I'm getting away for a gos- so few days.
No, you can't go.
Yeah.
I know, you can't go.
We need an itinerary.
It's going to with me. August is the only month we can get away.
So.
But you did that last year. You're going to do it again this year, too?
That's not right, Arash.
Take me with you.
As long as you're reachable, twenty-four, seven by phone, it's okay.
Just
Or isn't there satellite phones in one of those?
I'm sorry, there's no, there's no signal here. I don't know what's going on here.
Breaking up, just going out of bowline.
Yeah.
I'm a resident, right?
That's it.
Alright, so this is to appoint uh Mr. Ahern, Mike Ahern, as a temporary town manager. With my absence, so he'll be available.
Yes, that's great. Thank you for doing that. Alright, so we'll go take a motion on that.
I move to approve the appointment of Mr. Mike Ahern as the temporary town manager during the absence of the town manager effective Wednesday, August third, two thousand twenty-two through Friday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, until the town manager resumes managerial powers and duties.
Take a second on that?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Um, we hold these for next time. These appointments, it's just.
We have the, we have one or two.
Yeah, we got a couple. Yeah, we got a couple.
Two, one is.
Yeah, yeah. Where's the other one? I thought there was another one, too. Oh, the cemetery committee?
Yeah.
Oh, that's um, um, yes.
Andrew Lou Millard. Andre, excuse me, sorry.
Is she cemetery or planning and zoning?
Put in the bowl.
But there's no.
Nothing.
Ms. Miller. There's something we're planning and zoning? Oh, that's why I'm confused, because I thought there was something. But what whatever happened, Kate, with that? Issue with one of the planning and zoning numbers? Oh.
So the letter was sent. And I mean, if you want to wait on this for that.
Yeah.
But there was a, so just so you know, there was somebody who's not attending.
Right.
And we sent a letter asking him to do the fine. So.
No answer.
Heard anything and to be honest with you, that's the problem is.
That is the problem right there, yeah.
So what has happened is that this meeting in December.
Okay.
We can ask, you can remove it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's been a long time, too. We 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 don't normally do that. We try and work with the folks that are on it, but that's right. This has been right, Kate, for.
Yeah.
Like a a year or more, but yeah.
It was supposed to be some kind of, you know, there was some personal issue.
Yeah, I understand. That's why we. We kind of let her, right, right. That's what I understand, yeah. Well, what? So let's just wait on that, because I.
The term also expires.
Commission expires, yeah.
Ember two.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Which I think is before.
It's cutting it close. Oh, let's cut it close. Let's be daring. Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah.
Hey, give him my phone number.
I I I think I just lost signal for some reason. It happens a lot.
Be glad to talk to him.
Just kidding. Yeah, let's just wait.
Wait.
Yeah, let's wait for both if we could. And what just, okay, yeah, let's just wait. All right, where are we at now? Where are we at? What I do in my agenda? I lost my agenda. Oh, here we are. Our manager.
Our manager.
Our manager report. How could I forget that?
So, yes, we had the halfway mark here, town council meeting.
Halfway mark. The what?
Halfway point.
Oh, the halfway point.
This report, I want to go forward.
You should, and you should. We won't stop you.
I read it from the back already.
We're gonna relax. We're gonna enjoy the show.
Here's what I would. So, so serious point that most of you, including myself, we always hear when things don't go right in town hall. So this report is to give you a sense of all of the great work that the town staff. They do every day. And most of the time, they don't get a thank you from anyone, but I I just want you to, won't go through the whole thing, just. Take it home with you. I send it electronically, read it. And just get a appreciation for everything that's happening in this great town.
It's great stuff.
They keep the place going. And, you know, a lot of that goes unnoticed. So I asked them to sort of try to do this a couple of times a year. Give you.
Yeah, that's good. You do that, yeah.
Think that's happening and and now each year, I'm very, even more impressed with the level of commitment, dedication. The professional professionalism they bring. This town and. About the residents and their quality of life and how they can improve it. Very attentive. We have worked very hard to try and improve customer service and responsiveness.
We have.
And, you know, be fair and treat everyone the same way. And it goes the wrong way. So take a look at it. And what I would like to do is, and obviously, if you have any follow-up questions, I'll. Answer them next time, but I do would like you to take a look at it.
Oh, yeah.
And then. Perhaps the next meeting. Do the town manager review.
Oh, that's very important.
You really don't have time to do that now.
Oh, let's do it now. What the heck?
Not ready.
So I'll do the same way. I'll do it right up now.
Look at it this way, we did it now, it'd be very quick. No, 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 we'll wait. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, that's good. Well, thanks for this, Roche, because, you know, I have the first one. You gave us one earlier in the year for the first half.
Yeah.
And it's great because we get. Well, yeah, we we know it's done and we could questions on this all the time. You know, different people ask different questions about different what's going on.
What's going on with X?
Yeah, so it's great to have this to. I've referenced it a few times, the first one, like, oh, well, here's what we're doing.
Even things like, you know, like the assessment, you know, they are trying to get the revale done by for the October.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's good.
Economic development talks about all the new businesses.
Yeah, no, it's all good stuff.
The PD talks about the new programs, you know, they're doing the Berlin credit, police credit program, something new here. It's all all those things are little things. You don't see it in the.
Right, right. No, we don't.
Like like the fire department, all the training and the things that they do.
Oh, yeah.
To prepare.
That's great.
It's extensive when you look at these things.
It is wonderful. It really is. It's very helpful because it's, you know, rather than us. Picking up the phone or having to email you or Kate or Mike or whoever, whatever department it is, at least we get a little bit of the knowledge to able to answer some questions and. If we need more, we obviously go to you guys, but. Yeah, that's good.
And then some of them, you know, because, you know, like the planning and zoning, we work with P O C D and the.
Yeah.
What about housing? But it's a lot of work that goes into these things.
I don't think people understand how much work is done, but that's why these are great to get out there, yeah.
Great, so only request, just read it and we'll chat about it next time.
Yes, absolutely. Way off in September somewhere, wherever that is.
Uh, Councilor Russell, is your sound working?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You know, on that note, I I'd like to. Just make a note of the work that Jim Simons does in the town garage. I I read that section of the report. Uh.
Good stuff.
It seemed to pull off miracles there sometime. I mean, that's pretty technical and there's certain things you can and can't do. And but I'm I'm very impressed with that section and and the report, Arush.
Yeah, they do a lot of stuff. Well, I just happened, speaking of the town garage, I just happened to be at the Connecticut Tire today because of whatever issues I had. Uh, and one of the town employees was dropping off from the town garage, the the bu- the van there and. Just talking to him a little bit, but, you know, they're they're doing, you know, he said they're busy, they're doing all that great stuff and. I think they're down a couple of people, too. So, I mean, he was just telling me what's going on, so it was all good to hear, so. It's all good stuff to talk to our, you know, people once in a while that you run into and just say, hey, how's it, you know, how's it going there? So, yeah, he's happy to be working for the town and, you know, that's good.
He is very good in terms of, you know, safety and protocol and. He, a few months ago, you know, town manager car keeps dying and it died and he.
It died.
No longer drive, taking it away, it's done.
Taking it away. Good.
Tell this to your boss.
Yeah, well, you, well, you drove it into the ground, literally. Okay, so that's good.
So he's he's good.
Yes.
He's on top of everything.
Okay, so we're at what our special committee reports. Do we have any? I don't think we really have any, do we, at this point? Um, no, I don't think, right? No, nothing's going on. I mean, nothing in the committee. Lots going on, but not. Okay, so council communications. Just two quick things. I'll start and you guys can finish. What these letters, what are the cemetery? Yes, they have these cemetery commission letters. It it seems like there's.
Shocked, Fortham and Farring District isn't responding properly.
That seems to be what Charles Caleri is saying, right? I mean, I do. Yeah, we we know what the, kind of what.
Could we use the blight ordinance to clean this property up?
Yeah, do we know what is happening with this? Do you see these letters? Yeah, thanks, Kate.
With the cemetery committee.
Yeah.
They've been trying to clean up the cemetery, but you know.
Sure.
And you've seen the work that they've done, especially it is really.
Yeah, they're doing good work.
Um, they've done the the fence thing, they've bought in, they trimmed everything a whole bit. So in this piece, they have. Gone in and they tried to do what the town, you know, what they can with the town.
Right.
They try to communicate with the Worthington Empire District because it needs to be cleaned up. And it's been.
And it's their property.
Nothing, but they're trying to like make everything look nice and everything.
Has the town reached out to Mr. Powers regarding this? I mean, do we have any position to be able to do that? Can I have a copy of this letter?
So we'll we'll, yeah, look at it, Jeff. Just tell us what you think.
You know, these guys are trying to clean up and and do a nice job with the cemetery. It doesn't seem like.
A little help would be nice.
So what happened was simply that the it's coming from the Cemetery Committee. And again, it's because they're trying to clean up the cemetery.
Okay.
Respectful.
Sure. So. Just, Jeff, if you look at it and look look into it, Arush and Jeff. Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry, I.
I'm sorry. You want these copies? You have.
See, I'm sorry. This was what I was instructed by the Cemetery Committee to do is just make sure that it's healthy. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
And I apologize for not letting.
I mean, since they're working so hard to clean these up.
Yeah, we should help them out.
Them out by addressing this.
Yeah, I know. I don't. Yeah, I don't know. I I assume that's what they want. So if you can check into this. See what we could do for the Cemetery Committee. Appreciate that. And another, just one last issue. Cameras on the ballot box. So I I I think we're doing ourselves a disservice by having a ballot box like that outside without any cameras on it covering the box. Are we? Okay, one or two? Can we? It's on order. Okay. Will it cover the cars driving up and what's? It'll get all that.
You're talking about the one outside tunnel?
Correct. Yeah, it should be on camera, that's. Okay, and they could put it, okay. Well, thank you for that. That's great. Yeah, I mean, that's just not. It's not safe today. That people would go and who knows what they throw in it, you know, they could throw a burning, you know, something. I mean, that's they do that to mailboxes.
You have to move the mailbox.
Right. They do that to mailboxes. Yeah.
Yep.
Right. Well, yeah, all of that. So, yeah, it's just something we should. Okay, so that's. That's great. All right, that's all my stuff. What do you guys have? Council Communications, anything?
Mark?
Yes, Peter.
Um.
We have a.
Two things.
Yes.
I I woke Sunday morning to see our. Uh, town clerk on channel thirty correcting.
Yes, oh. I did see that, Kate, yes.
Reporter.
And here's Kate from from. Yes, yes. Did you brought that up? I saw that.
Y'all know, I know. It's good that the whole.
Yeah, everybody knows. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And also, I'm.
Celebrity.
About the property across from Paper Goods, I built C I L.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it's getting overgrown again. It kind of looked lousy. I don't know if we could send them a letter or.
Yeah.
A bond on the property, so.
Do they still own? They, I thought we had, yeah. Do they sell that? I forget what happened with that property, didn't they?
Not to my house. I know we pulled a bond on it.
Ten Main Street is is the the condos, but I don't know if it changes. On the other side of the street. No, it's still got to be Main Street there, right?
Main, because then Percival starts at the.
They were gonna build townhouses there, Jeff, and it never happened, but I thought they came to the town and said, we can't do it anymore, right, Peter? And they can't do it anymore. But I don't know if did they dump the pro- I don't remember.
Talking about where the lot is?
Yeah, the lot across the street.
Yeah.
Because that was supposed to be developed. Part, I mean, part of it's the paved parking lot, but the rest of it that curves around.
Yeah, and I know there's.
So I I just thought I thought I remembered something where they were getting rid of it.
They were asking for money.
Oh, did they ask? They asked us for money?
Wanted twenty-five thousand dollars. I remember I.
From us?
Flowers. And Peter and I asked him, what kind of flowers are you gonna plant?
The money-giving kind.
Uh.
They had some kind of payment schedule. When the project was complete, they were gonna get a kickback from the town. The town. Put all kinds of taxpayer dollars into their projects and.
Right.
Off the flat.
And the and the, right, they just decided not to do it, right?
We subsidized the Tyvek building and then we subsidized the factory building and.
Right.
Subsidized the empty lot.
So you think they still own that property?
Far as I know.
I think so.
Okay, so we gotta, if we could look into that, we'll get the address for you, Jeff, or.
Thanks.
Uh, it's not maintained. It's a it is a mess. I I agree with you, Peter. It's a it's a mess there, yeah. I I think this happened before, right? Didn't we make them clean it up once before?
We asked them to, um.
Yeah.
But I remember we pulled a bond five or six years ago on that.
Right, right, okay, yes, you're right. That's right. Yeah, because I remember we've gone through this before. They just kind of walked away and.
Right.
Decided they didn't want to build it, which is too bad because it was going to be a nice development.
And it's funny because the market now is is ripe for that kind of a town.
I I would think they'd want to finish their project, which which, from what I remember, was a nice-looking project across the street. It was gonna be townhouses. It was pretty nice, but. It's too bad it never went anywhere, but, yeah, okay, thanks, Peter, for bringing that up. We'll check it out, Arush, and. See if we need to send anything to them from the town. Okay, now, anything else, folks? No?
Good.
We're good? We're good? Okay.
We missed that. Veterans of that.
I know, the concert.
Before I was running over here, it was nicely, well-attended.
Yeah, I stopped by there.
Too humid, it was.
Yeah, it was nice. We tried to, that's why hence that was my thing in moving the council meeting, but I know it just got too complicated, so we just said, so I stopped by there, too. Talked to the commander of the band. They were so happy to be here and. So the good, here here's the last thing about the Berlin Veterans Commission. So. The commander of the band told me, he said. Uh, no, I'm sorry, it was Peter, Peter Gagano told me that the veteran said, so they gave them, you know, pizza and soda before the concert. He said they're the only place they've ever been that. They they ever got fed.
Really?
That's military army band guys. I said, what? Great, that's why the Veterans Commission is so great in Berlin.
All right.
You did such a nowhere else. They said they've not, they were telling them tonight, I guess, they can, no one ever pays us. Yeah, Peter's great and and Charles, too, so anyway. Again, kudos to Berlin Veteran Commission. They do, right? Amazing stuff. Okay, so acceptance of minutes, July twelfth, we'll take a motion.
Okay, motion to accept the July twelfth meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, if there's no questions, all those in favor?
I.
I, okay, so move. And we really need a motion? Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Ready?
More to talk about?
Discuss it. We'll discuss it.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move second? All those in favor?
I.
Hi. Thank you all very much, Mr. Denafrio, everyone here. Thank you, Kate, Arush, everyone. Yeah, have a good August. Have a good August vacation. That's right, okay. Okay. We'll put that on the ladies. Thank you, Sue. Thank you. I, we we did the best with everything. I hope it, I hope it works.